So, good morning, good morning, good morning to everyone in the U.S. And good evening to everyone.
This meeting is being recorded.
And good evening to everyone in the other side of the world. So, we're gonna get started. Um, but what I wanna do first is I'm Charisma Free Men or Charisma Cares as some people know me. Um, and I wanna tell you a little bit about why the town hall meeting, this Black Town Hall meeting. Um, so basically, as you all know, especially the ones in the States, things have been very turbulent. It has been a very hard transition. And this transition is coming before the transition. And we as Black Americans are really feeling the brunt of it. Um, it was last weekend, this has not been planned for a very long time. Literally last weekend, when I started to find out that our children, our teenagers, our college students were receiving these text messages. That basically, if you haven't heard about it or seen it, these text messages basically assigned them a number and let them know that beginning of January, they will be picked up and what their new job as a slave will be. Their new job may be picking cotton or working in the house or working on a plantation. And that struck me, struck me, and it struck me deeply. And it was something that I really couldn't ignore. And as I saw more and more people talk about what was going on and what we needed to prepare for that was coming with the new administration of Trump, I just felt like I needed to do something. I began to be overloaded with a number of questions. Questions about how do I move abroad? And how do I leave the U.S.? What do I need to do? How do we unite? Um, you know, I have several groups, groups, Facebook groups of people that wanna black sit or live abroad. And just started getting this big influx of people that wanted to join. This influx happened over time. This influx has happened, um, a couple of years ago after COVID, and it happened again this time. And I felt like what we needed to do as Black America is to unite and to come together and stop just in the whole competitive, the competitive sphere that we have. And we needed to unite. And I had planned to do this in a month. But what happened was that I started talking to the community and they said they needed it right away. So, within a week's time, I gathered these speakers, um, some amazing speakers. I gathered these speakers and, um, I asked them if they would come on and educate. So, the purpose of this meeting today is to empower, to educate, and to elevate our community. Um, you will receive a recording. If you're watching the recording, you know that. So, you will have this to go back on. This is a free event. Everyone is doing this voluntarily. Um, no one is charging for this because the goal is, like I said, empower, educate, and elevate. So, I'm so thankful that, um, these other individuals have come to help me. And so, this is how our schedule will go. I will, me being a medicine, I'm a nurse practitioner and I specialize in mental health. I will start by talking about where we are mentally and how to further prepare yourself for what's about to happen. Because for a lot of us, we have not experienced the level of racism, sexism, and all the other isms that are coming. So, I will start first with that. Then, um, we'll go to Ms. Faye, who will talk to us about moving abroad and the first steps you need to take to move abroad. Because it's more than just I'm leaving. There are steps you want to take and you want to be prepared. Then, Ms. Ashley will come on and talk to us about getting our finances in order. I think for a lot of us, we, you know, we need to clean up our financial house. We are not prepared. We may not be prepared for what happened in the last few years, much less the years to come. So, I wanna make sure that we are prepared for what we're doing. And lastly, I will have Mr. Smooth, who will bring it all together as an educator and an advocate to tell us how we can come together collectively and unify as one. So, you know, share this with everyone you know. Um, and you know, what I want to do is I'm going to see how this event goes. Like I said, this is just something that was on my heart that I put together. But if this event goes well and you all like it, I'll send out a survey, let me know, and we can do this event again. We can have this quarterly or, you know, bi-annually, whatever it is that we need to do. And we can take it a step farther with the education. Um, one thing that I have told my followers is that 2025 is the year of unification. It is, you know, this is no longer conquer and divide. This is when we need to come together and this is when we need to work together. One of the things I told someone is that when you live abroad, I've been living abroad for about three years now in multiple countries. So, I'd say I'm pretty used to this. But one thing that I can say is when you go to other countries, you see the ethnicities coming together and building together. That is something that we uniquely as Black people do not do as Black Americans. You know, we have our house and we have our car. But what we don't have, what we don't have are buildings and apartments and, you know, all of these major things. I went looking for an apartment the other day and I was told this apartment is owned by Zulus and another tribe here. Or this apartment is owned by Indians. Or this one was built by Chinese. But never have I gone to one and they say, "This one is from the Black Americans." So, it's kind of time, you know, in the midst of every crisis, there comes, there comes some type of elevation. So, what I hope is that by the end of this, we spark some type of unity and elevation and just give you that, um, that need to say, "Wait, it's time. It's time for us to come together and do more. It's time for us to come together and unify. It's time for us to be able to depend on each other and bring back our communities." Um, so, that is the purpose of this Black Town Hall meeting. Um, before I get started talking about, um, the mental health part of it, let us know if anyone, if there anything anyone wants to say, any questions, any concerns, um, anything at all, feel free to take yourself on mute, off of mute, and, um, join in to the conversation. Because I do want this to be a conversation, not just us preaching to you all. I don't wanna talk at once. So, I want to, before I jump on the last five minutes, introduce Ms. Brittany. Brittany, can you jump on for a quick second for me? So, this is Ms. Brittany with the Black Spot.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. Good morning, good afternoon, wherever you are in the world. Um, so, I have the pleasure of introducing Charisma today. I just wanna give you a little bit of information and background about the Black Spot. So, we are, um, a travel company, a travel company and a collaborative community, um, bringing, uh, Black people of the diaspora home to Africa. Um, and so, if you are interested in traveling, moving, repatriating, all of those things, um, or just in general, all things Black, please reach out to us. Uh, my co-founder is also on the call. Yama, can you put, um, the Black Spot information, the link tree into the chat? We have some upcoming, uh, trips, um, in May of 2025 and December of 2025. So, if you're interested to get your feet wet, just to see if you've never been to Africa and you wanna travel before you think about moving, um, reach out to us and let us know. We got you. Um, and so, I'm going to introduce Charisma now. Charisma Free Men, known as Charisma Cares, is a functional medicine nurse practitioner, committed, excuse me, committed to healing women physically and mentally. A seasoned expert and solo mom of two, she uses the world as her classroom, seven countries and counting, providing her children with invaluable life lessons and opportunities. Beyond her work in functional medicine, Charisma lives her dream travel life through real estate investing while empowering her community as a medical provider, consultant, and advocate for solo parents and special needs families. So, please turn your attention to Charisma.
I need to unmute my phone and so I'm new to Zoom with all of this. Brittany, can we share my screen?
No problem. I got you.
Just tell me when.
You can go ahead.
Okay. So, what I wanna talk about right now is I wanna talk about coping and psychological distress and the mental anguish that can come around with discrimination that we're experiencing in this political climate. And, you know, I want this to be a discussion so that you all can feel free to jump in whenever um, and say what it is that you need to say or ask any questions or anything of that nature. So, what I wanna talk about is we're gonna talk about top, these top stress, key stressors that we're dealing with. Right now, we're dealing with things that are a bit unprecedented. For a lot of us, we may not have seen this in our lifetime. For some of us, maybe we've seen some of it as children. So, the racism, the sexism, the physical threats, the, these race, racial bias text messages, these social media posts. Um, and then the political tension that comes along with backing all of this up. Because in the past, if we've seen this, it's been behind closed doors. It hasn't been something that's right in our face. So, for example, I recently saw where, I think it was a politician that was talking too, kind of in a town hall meeting, they were in a meeting of such. And he literally used the N-word. And he used the N-word very easily. He just said it as if it was part of the conversation and the communication. He had no, no remorse about that. It wasn't as if he used it and then he took it back. He just said it, it just flowed off his tongue as easy as you said, "Oh, can I order a fancy grape soda?" That is the way that went during that town hall meeting. And I think that he expected, because he was in a room full of white individuals, that they would be okay with it. And they had to tell him, "No, actually, that's not okay. You are not going to use that derogatory term here." So, what we're seeing is something new. What we're seeing these, we should think these white, you know, far MAGA individuals decide that, "Oh, it's okay. It's okay to speak to them like that. It's okay to speak of them like that. It's okay to say all of these things of hatred that we've had felt in our hearts to this point that we had to keep, keep hitting." You know, there was something else that said, "The children that threw stones at Ruby Bridges are now the children that's burning our history books." They are now adults and they are trying to hide the history of what they did to this young girl, that they did to the other children and adults. All of these different things they're trying to hide because they don't want their children to know who they are. So, during this talk, what I wanna do is I want to acknowledge your emotions. I wanna normalize your feelings of sadness, of fear, of distress because it is valid. It is very much valid during this political climate. This political climate that we are just starting to experience because these are things that are going on and we haven't even gotten, because Trump hasn't even gotten in office yet. I also wanna emphasize to you that these feelings are natural. They are natural responses to harmful and unfair situations. And then what I want you to take out of this discussion is practical tools to manage the physical and the emotional tolls of the racial discrimination, the sexism, all of the isms. I want you to be able to deal with that. And I want you to be mindful that this is not just a mental thing. This is a body and mind thing. So, when you are affected mentally, you are also affected physically. So, first, I want you to understand that there is a response to discrimination through the body. And that comes through first chronic stress. So, in our body, we have cortisol. And these are just for, not to worry about terms, but this is what your body does when you're stressed out. Your cortisol levels increase, your immunity decreases, so you're more likely to get sicker easier. You know, this affects your heart, it affects your nervous system, it affects digestion. This is why some people, when they get really stressed out, they either eat a lot or they don't eat at all. That is just basically your mind's way of dealing with the stress. And what we know is that Black Americans face a 20% higher rate of mental health issues related to racist, racism-related stress and discrimination. So, really think about that. We literally already start at an unlevel playing field when we're looking at dealing with the discrimination and the way that it affects our body. And all of this repeated stress then causes inflammation in our body. So, it lowers our energy level and it lowers our resilience to these different stressors that's coming in. Things that we can still with, you know, up here near, when we're in the workplace and we have, you know, have a person that makes the little comment here about our hair. Or we have the person that makes the little comment there about maybe something we're eating. It starts off like that, but over time, you have to think you're receiving these stressors daily, weekly, on a regular basis. So, what happens is it begins to break us down and we become less resilient to these types of stressors. And our body actually becomes inflamed. So, we're not, we're not supposed to fight off our diseases as well. And we're more, we're now more susceptible to other things. And we'll go into that, but that's the high blood pressure, the diabetes, the stroke. We now have higher rates of that because of the level of stress that we're facing. Then we have the mental health strain. The continuous exposure of this causes things like anxiety, depression, low self-esteem, and other mental issues. And this is just dealing with the racism, the sexism. This isn't even dealing with our day-to-day lives. This isn't even dealing with the fact that if we go to the doctor, we're more unlikely to have a doctor that doesn't treat us the way that we should be treated because of our skin color. You know, there was a time where they felt like Black people didn't feel pain. So, they can do barbaric experiments on us because, I mean, our skin color is different. Because, so, of course, we, I mean, of course, we don't feel pain, right? Which is completely BS as we know. But this is the way we used to think and this was not that long ago. And so, what we find is that 25% of Black Americans, that means a quarter of Black Americans need mental health support. Oh, but the only, I'm sorry, 25% of Black Americans that need mental health support receive it. The rest of us aren't getting it. So, whether it is due to the barrier of access, due to the stigma of, you know, you don't need a counselor, you don't need a therapist, you don't need medication, you don't need any of those things. You know, suck it up, tough it out, you're a man, men don't cry, all of these different things. The cultural insensitivity. So, basically, if you are in a room of four people, at least one of you needs some mental health support that you are not receiving for whatever the reason may be. And that is a problem because we pass that on generation to generation to generation. And what I'm finding that and what we're seeing is that we're starting to make these changes. Um, you know, in my generation, we made a change so much that we kind of shifted and changed too much. Our parents were hard on us and we're a little too easy for our children in some cases. So, then as our children are coming up, they're having a hard time dealing with emotional stressors that we may find to be basic. So, there's a balance here, right? We don't wanna be too, too strict, too hard, but we don't wanna be to the point that we're, it's too easy and we're not giving enough, like, to our kids. So, it's a balance. But the thing is, as long as we try generation after generation and as long as we build on it and we improve on it, we can get there. But we have to get there together as a community. So, I want you all to understand the psychological impact of the discrimination. So, this all contributes to, like I said, the chronic stress, the anxiety, the depression, the hopelessness. And unfortunately, a lot don't understand depression in our community. See, so, when I was younger, I remember seeing this commercial on TV. I think it was for a depression medication. And there was this white woman and she was in the corner with her head down. She was sitting in the corner, head in the corner, head between her legs and crying. Well, I'm gonna tell you, I've been a medical professional for almost 20 years. I have never encountered depression. And I'm not gonna say it doesn't happen, but depression in the Black community does not allow us to sit in the corner with our head down and crying our legs. You, now, you may get five minutes. You may get five minutes to cry. But depression looks for us 99% of the time like I still have, and excuse my French, shit to do. I still have to get up and go to work. I still have to pay these bills. I still have to take care of my children. I still have to care for my elderly parents. I don't have time for depression. I don't have time to be tired. I don't have the luxury to sit in the corner. Like, I don't have it. And for those that do, you do. But for most of us, we don't have time. We are too busy fighting for our jobs, fighting for the place and the company, fighting for things that are rightfully ours. So, what happens is we continue to go and go and go and run and we go, go, go until we shut down. That is what depression normally looks like in our community. It looks like you come in to see me because your blood pressure is so high that you're now having headaches and migraines. You come in to see me because you now are, cannot, you wanna get pregnant, but you can't get pregnant because the stress has affected your infertility. You come in to see me because you just got discharged from the hospital because you had a mini stroke. That is what depression looks like in our community. And it is very important that we start to identify stress in our community, that we start to identify depression, that we start to identify anxiety. When people start to shy away, you know, those people that had this great bubbly personality that you saw everywhere and then you don't see them, that's a problem. That's when we need to be checking one another. That's when we need to be picking up a phone. That's when we need to be stopping by. That's when we need to be doing things to make sure that person is okay. That's why we see these big stars that's like, "Oh, this person was so bubbly and great and this and that." And then they commit suicide. And I'm gonna tell you, right now is the highest level of suicide. This is when you're going to see the most people that are going to attempt suicide and the most people that are going to complete suicide as we go into the holidays. Because the holidays, while some people are happy and joyous, other people are going through it. They are dealing with so many different things. They're dealing with grief, they're dealing with loss, they're dealing with loneliness, they're dealing with hopelessness. And they need help, they need community, they need someone to check on them, to just tell them, "I love you, I miss you, I this, I that." They need that. And that's why it's very important that we come together and we identify what is really going on in our community. We come together and we identify when does someone need help. Because people are going to continue to need help during these next four years. They are going to need to lean on one another. They need someone to talk to. We need someone to talk to. So, I want you to be mindful of this. And for me, as a, a mental health practitioner, I've been doing another free class next week for people that need help getting through the holidays because it's hard. I'm doing one in November and I'm doing one in December. And it's important that we're here for each other. We're also going to have to deal with the mental and emotional exhaustion of the prolonged exposure to these things, to these messages and texts, to these policies that are coming out that are directly affecting us. I just saw in Florida where they just took off Wada Caged Bird Seeds. That is now a band book. How the hell can Wada Caged Bird Seeds be a band book? How is it that authors like Maya Angelou and Toni Morrison now being taken off the shelves? It is their way of erasing our history. So, this prolonged exposure that we are about to experience to all of these different things are going to put us in space and create mental anguish. Well, we need to have community and people to live on, to lead on. Um, dealing with these hate crimes. They just had the Nazis protesting outside of Anne Frank. Like, this is serious and we need to prepare ourselves mentally for what is about to happen. We need to be aware. So, I wanna teach, I wanna tell you about a few strategies that you can put in place. So, one of the, the first strategy is relaxation techniques. And, you know, relax, when I start talking about breathing episodes, people are often like, "Charisma, that doesn't work." But it actually does. Take it a moment to focus on your breathing, Ashley Waters. Take it a moment to focus on your inhaling and your exhaling, to count those inhales and exhales. I want you to take like four seconds to inhale and 10 seconds to exhale. And I'm gonna show you because if you do it now with me, nobody can see you. So, you can do it, but what you'll find is that you're so busy focusing on your inhaling and exhaling and you can't do that and continue to be angry. You can't do that and continue to be stressed. So, what we'll do is we'll inhale for four seconds. Four, and exhale for 10. And if you notice, if you did it with me, you'll notice that it kind of just automatically calms you down. And I'm gonna do it one more time. And if you didn't do it with me the first time because you thought this was BS, try it with me this time. So, we're gonna breathe in for four. Out for 10. And what this does is it actually slows down the pace of things in your body. It slows down your heart rate. It slows everything down, slows down your breathing. It slows your mind down. So, you can literally go in the bathroom, go in your car and take five minutes just to do this deep breathing exercise. And you can basically restart yourself. You know, it sounds simple. It is simple, but it actually works for me now. It very much works to ground yourself. And when you get to the point that you start to like to do that, you can even add in some music. I know me and YouTube or Alexa will add in some meditation music. I will add, I'll tell them to play some ocean sounds. You can, you know, it's all kinds of things you can ask for it to play. So, that can help you to slow things down, slow down, you know, help with your blood pressure, slow down your heart rate. The next thing is to stay active. So, exercise boosts your energy level and actually has been, has been proven to improve your mood. So exercise boosts your energy level and actually has been, has been proven to improve your mood. And exercise doesn't have to just be running on a treadmill. This can be walking, dancing, you can do some stretching exercises, and this releases endorphins, basically the happy hormones. Um, and it decreases the cortisol that we talked about, so that stress hormone. And for you all that don't know, that stress hormone is also what puts weight around your waist. So just apply, so do any things, like have you ever done the cha-cha slide and been mad? Like you literally cannot do the cha-cha slide and still be pissed off. Um, it's actually just impossible um, to do if you've ever actually shot. Like if you've been sitting in the corner just angry and then the cha-cha slide comes on, like you're just mad or you know, maybe somebody did something and the cha-cha slide came on and you just kind of cha-ching in your mind? And then next thing you know, you get up and you cha-ching. I promise you, you cannot be mad and do the cha-cha slide. It is something, I know when I was little, my mom used to throw on some music, ah, you know, some Aubrey. Now Aubrey was sad, but you know, a little love and happiness never killed anybody. And you get up and you start dancing and next thing you know, you just feel good. It's something that our parents realized when they were playing church music on Sunday morning. They knew this without the statistics. They knew that music had a way of uplifting in our spirits and our souls. Our ancestors used to do this out on slave fields. They went out there and they were singing, you know, and that's still like, why the hell are they happy? They shouldn't be happy, they should be miserable. But they knew by the singing and dancing that it just made them happy. And what we now know is that it releases endorphins, it releases the happy hormone. And I want you all to know these because these are simple things, relaxation, dancing, you know, walking, stretching. These are simple things that you can do on a regular basis to make yourself feel well. The other thing is getting enough sleep. Yes, I know a lot of us don't sleep, I'm notorious for that as well. But in actuality, I want you to know what happens when you sleep. When you sleep, there is a washing that goes on with your brain. Like it's literally um, in this fluid that is replenishing the brain. It is allowing your brain to replenish, taking all that new information so they can, so it can feed it back to you. And I know no one's ever probably explained that, like that is why sleep is important. During that time, your liver is detoxing. So all that bad stuff that came in, if you went out, now y'all know I live in Nairobi, if you went out and you was drinking, your liver needs some extra time to detox. I'm sure, if you had, I'm gonna tell you. Your liver needs some extra time to get rid of the toxins from that night. Your body has to detox, your liver, your kidneys, your brain needs time. Everything needs time during this period of sleep to rejuvenate, to rest and to recover. And it's the same thing when we're dealing with stress. Your body needs to recover from the stresses of the day. So I want you to, to start focusing on your sleep. For me, I actually had to set a bedtime. I was notorious for insomnia. So I've done some testing and I looked at some different things going on in my system and I now take certain supplements to help me um, clean everything out, because we got a lot of stuff, y'all. Um, and I set a bedtime, I actually set a bedtime for ten thirty. Now, I don't always adhere to it, but sometimes we gotta go back to the basics, the fact, the way we were putting the baby to bed and our moms were putting, our moms and dads were putting us to bed, we need to get rest and sleep. It is important. We didn't know why it was important before, you know, back in the day, they, and they may still do it, I don't know a lot about the military, but they would do, they would torture people with sleep deprivation. They would literally torture you by not allowing you to go to sleep. So really think about that, if they can use sleep to torture you, what does that say? You're about your body, that is something that you need, because no sleep can literally make you go insane. Then there's nutritional supports. There are supplements, magnesium, B vitamins, things like ashwagandha that you may have heard of, things like that that can improve mood and reduce stress. If that's something that you feel like you need or you wanna talk more about, you can actually make an appointment with me. I'll do free appointments for you, um, for us to talk about a plan and see what's needed. And then if you feel like there's stress, you're anxiety, depression, if things are really getting to you, then we need to talk about more therapeutic methods. We need to talk about maybe doing some therapy, um, looking at lifestyle changes, helping you do these things that we discussed, um, seeing how this may be affecting your heart, your GI system, all these different things in your body that I said also affects, you know, your mind affects your body and your body affects your mind. So if you're feeling like, okay, these things aren't helping, I'm having panic attacks. You, if you don't know what panic attacks are, panic attacks are basically these brief periods where you may feel like you can't breathe, you may feel a tightness in your chest. Um, you, you may feel like you just can't do anything, like you know, the world's closing in on you, the sky is falling. And these may happen infrequently or they may happen frequently. You may find that maybe they happen every once or twice a month, but then they get to the point where they're happening weekly or they're happening monthly. So if you start to feel like you're having these type of things happen, then we do need to talk because we need to look at what we need to do so that you don't get to the point of high blood pressure, strokes, diabetes, things of that nature, things that we are more prone to. Then some psychological strategies, limit media consumption. I'm gonna tell you, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, if you still on X or Twitter. Um, I'm technically on it because I forgot my password, but I plan to get off. But you and I'm tearing some of that stuff off. And I'm notorious for being on my social media, but some of this stuff, we're just gonna have to turn off. We are going to have to decrease the intake of this negative, in, of these negative influences that are coming into our body, coming into our minds and haunting our souls. We are going to have to do that. Some of this stuff, we just gonna have to turn it off, turn off the news, turn off the social media, because you need to do what's best for you and in your best interest. So if what is in your best interest is for you to turn it off, then you just need to turn it off. The next thing I want you to do, let's practice self-compassion. And hear me again, practice self-compassion. It is okay to feel however you feel. It is okay to be angry, it's okay to be pissed off, it is okay to be mad, it is okay to be sad. It is okay to say, y'all F around and y'all about to find out. Like it's actually very much okay. Your, any emotional response that you have to discrimination, any emotional response that you have to learning about these things that are going on in our world, any of these things are okay. Take time to talk to someone about it. Talk about your feelings, create groups amongst yourselves, meet up every so often, whatever it is that you need to do, you do that, but be compassionate to yourselves. So the support is here, you know, create that community support. I know me for one, if you're familiar with me, I have Facebook groups, I have WhatsApp groups. Um, and it's not hard to make, you can always just create a group or I'm sure Facebook has a gazillion groups, there is a group for everything. Go in there and find, find your safe space. If that is going to church with your church family, if that's being with your family, if that's FaceTiming, if that's finding new friends, but find safe places that you can talk, that you can decompress and that you can gain support. And when I say support, I'm not talking about the passive aggressive people, let's leave them. Let's leave the passive aggressive who's on the side. I'm talking about people that truly, truly support you and understand what it is that you're dealing with. And even if they can't provide an answer, they can provide compassion. You all can sit here and you all can just discuss what's going on and you all can empathize with each other, not just sympathize, but empathize with each other because you're going through it together. So reach out to someone and be that support system and let them know you need support. In the black community, we are always strong, whether it's a strong black man or a strong black woman, we are always strong. And I'm gonna tell you, being strong is killing us. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to be the person saying, being strong is killing us. Sometimes it's okay not to be the strongest person in the room. Sometimes you need support, you need help, and that is perfectly okay, that is perfectly fine. What is, what, what does have strength is your ability to recognize that you need help. Because it's the weak part of us that doesn't wanna accept or admit that we need help or that we need assistance or we need to lean on somebody or we need to cry about it. Because that's what we've been taught and that's what's been put in us and ingrained in us since children. But it's the strength in us that's gonna say, you know what, maybe I, maybe I do need to take some medication. Maybe I do need to step back. Yeah, I'm a big proponent of taking medical leave. Yeah, I would write for a patient to take medical leave in a heartbeat, because you're not about to sit there and stress me out and still want me to do my work and perform the way that I was performing before, when I'm dealing with all of these stresses, your medical leave is there for you. For one, have taken mental health medical leave at least two or three times. And I will happily tell you that, because guess what, I paid into this system and this system gonna pay me back. So that's just the way I feel about things. You took your mental health, you took your time off when you went on maternity leave because you needed that time to heal? Well, I took my time off when y'all stressed me the F out, because I need this time to heal. Healing is healing regardless of what we're healing from. So your physical body needed healing and my mental body needed healing. So and when we look at, um, when we look at the FMA, FMLA, and we look at short-term visibility, mental health falls under one of the things you can receive leave for. So just in case you were wondering, take the three months, because most of you have ninety days, three months to take off. So just in case you didn't know that, I'm a very big proponent of taking your mental health leave. Um, so options if you need more support. Um, you, I do, as a mental health provider, I do focus on um, more holistic and natural ways of healing, healing your mental and your physical body. So if you needed more assistance, you can book a free call with me, I'll throw the link in here at some point. But you can book a free call with me and we can talk about what it is that you need. And if I can help you, if I can't help you, I'll point you in the direction of assistance that you may need. Um, and we can talk about some coping mechanisms. So that's one thing that you can do and we can create this action plan together. So that's if you feel like you need something to help you towards a stronger mental health foundation and more um, resilience. So um, another thing is I, like I said, if you are, you or someone you know is dealing with a hard, typically deals with a hard time with the holidays or you think you may, I am doing a free um, class and support group um, next week. Um, next, it's Wednesday night for Eastern Standard Time. Or, and I'm doing another one in December that is actually on a Saturday. So if you know someone that needs help or you need help or you need support or assistance, maybe you lost a loved one or anything like that, I'll send you that information. Um, and like I said, that's free, it, it is my way of giving back. I do free courses, classes every month to educate and empower you. And so, um, you think, said, I think I'm giving you all a lot to deal with, um, to go over. Um, so again, relaxation techniques, staying active, getting enough sleep, nutritional support, therapeutic options, um, limiting social media, practicing self-compassion, getting community support, if you need it, doing a breakthrough call. Okay, so now's the time where I want us to talk. If you could turn on your cameras, let me know how you're feeling. This is more of a um, safe space and I want you all to, let's see. Okay, and I want you all to just tell me what's on your mind. I'm trying to look at the messages in the meantime, or if you all have any questions for me. Let's see. Don't be afraid.
Hello, how you doing now?
Hi.
Hey, this is um, Tramal, that's my black name, Matthew, my white name. So um, I heard you um, speaking about some of the things um, I would add. Or one thing that helped me as a, so wartime veteran was uh, mindfulness exercises. Cause um, sometimes when you, you, it was a three-month um, uh, program and I, I wanna say that, that helped me um, zoom out a little bit and not be so absolute about things, you know, you, sometimes we can get really down on ourselves and it's like, I am always this. I am such and such. And it's like, the, the, the program would have you write things down when you were, so I don't know how to do such and such. And you, you could literally write down all the times that you have successfully did that thing. And it, it diffuses all of that, you know what, I'm stupid, I'm always, nah, nah, nah. You've been great, but we, we really pick on ourselves to the extreme, especially if you are a perfectionist. So um, one of the other things, um, the toughness, like you said, the teenage suicide. I know at one time, uh, teenage suicide, uh, wow. I think they're at the highest levels, like you said, ever. And um, like you said, I'm fifty-three. So when we was coming up, you was tough, know everything was tough. Your family prepared you to be tough before you went to grammar school. Now, mm, 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 no, I might, I'm gonna say, no, no. Uh, fight back, that was one. Yeah, I hear people say, don't fight back to, no. Someone hit you, you hit them back, because it's the reality of this society. Um, I'm gonna say another thing, um, the role of religion for morals. And a lot of times, um, the society, it used to be black and white when I was coming up. It ain't black and white, it ain't black and white anymore. So um, we, right or wrong, we, we, we were very, uh, it was black and white. So you could just like, I'm here or there and you can accept that. But now, it's a lot of confusion out here and people wanna fit in, people always wanna fit in. Um, I think another thing about uh, uh, I would speak on the, the getting up and having stress. One of the things that reduced my stress is, as a soldier, that I found that, went into the military for sure. Every day when you have a purpose, I don't care, the night before, write down what you're gonna do tomorrow. Just write down, I don't, I don't care if it's just eating, eating Cap'n Crunch, I don't care. Write it, write it down, and if you gotta go to work, prepare the night before, relieve stress. Like we said, that cortisol, you wanna relieve that stress, you sleep better, you wake up better. It's amazing that I ain't gotta decide what clothes I'm finna put on or whatever. I wrote it out, it's already set up, I'm finna just go and do it, wow, stress reliever. So um, I'm gonna say, um, now, you had a couple, you hit everything. I would say this, eat what you need, stop eating what you like. You can eat what you like, but eat what you need to, eat what you need to. Especially you, you up in that age now, eat, eat what you need to. Um, but after that, what, uh, you had on our history and like you said, a lot of us um, at school. And like you said, a lot of us, um, at school, um, man, the things that, that we was taught, even in that little, let me see, history books, social studies, was probably about, I don't know, what, five hundred pages? Black history was probably about ten, and that, that ain't even in the book. That's not even there. And, and I think, um, for, for ourselves, if you want your child to know the history, you better tell him. You, you better ha, you better tell him in the home. Uh, Jewish person told me one time, they said, we don't rely on this school system to teach our kids nothing. They, they gonna pass that test on, on, on in school, but we teach them. We teach our kids what our history is. And, uh, co, it coming from a parent's gonna, uh, have weight, it's gonna have weight. Um, so yeah, yeah, that's, that's about, that's about it, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you for everything and, um, some of the stuff, um, you said I will put in action.
You're welcome, thank you for sharing, those were some great tips. Shikina?
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Shakina Keys, I am an elevated consciousness coach and a, um, man, body and spirit guide. I wanted to first say, um, you gave some great tips. This was a good, um, representation of your heart and your dedication to the people. I appreciate that. Um, I wanted to piggyback off of the brother that just, um, spoke. Creating boundaries and creating boundaries within your home. This is parents, you have to create boundaries even from your children. This is a certain level of way how you can detach and learn what you're really, really dealing with, within yourself. It is your responsibility to reach out when you know you need help. It is also your responsibility to sit with yourself. The mindful meditations and the different ways that we can take accountability for our own mental health is like the brother said, sitting down with yourself. Personally, I have a technique that I don't touch my phone after a certain time at night. And that time of night gives me time to digress, regress, and literally, if I wanna read a book, read a book, if I need to journal, I journal, I sit with myself. Even those who are married, there's ways that we can now have a slow downtime before you go to bed. Before you even allow yourself to go into the next phase, like you said, the washing of the brain. You can already process what your day was, how did you really feel? Allow yourself to close out the day with the essence of really checking in with yourself. I'm very big on dialogue with yourself. Ask yourself, how was today? How did I feel about dealing with certain coworkers? How did I, what can I learn from today? To really figure out, okay, what is my initial plan for tomorrow? Another thing is, I'm very big on first thing in the rising. Sometimes get up, uh, thirty minutes before everybody else, just to sit with yourself. And ask, having that same dialogue and asking yourself, how did I feel, how did I sleep last night? Checking in with yourself before you go out into the world. This is something that if you do not start by these small techniques to hone in, to check in with yourself, is hard, it is very hard to go out into the world and work with other people and put this face on and this facade, and you haven't did your own check in with yourself. So, my tip is always check in with yourself before you go to bed, create boundaries. I need a minute, I need a minute. It's okay to just, and I'm talking about people that got kids, I am a mother of three. I would definitely tell my children, in a minute, I love y'all, but mama need a minute. And I go into sitting, if it's five, ten, twenty minutes with myself. And allow myself, journaling is very powerful because it is a way to release the throat chakra without even speaking. It is a way to declutter the mind without even engaging with other people. You get to see what's in your heart and where your mind is when you sit with yourself. And just write, write what your day was feeling like, write what you feel like, what you feeling in this moment. One of the things about journals, you can use any language that you need in that journal. It is your personal space where you can release, you understand, and figure out, even if you, you had a moment and you felt overwhelmed, forgive yourself. She said compassion, many people don't really understand what compassion mean. Self-compassion is forgiveness, mercy, is flexibility and honoring the fact that I don't know everything, I don't always have the answers, and sometimes I make mistakes. But if you practice forgiving yourself in the moment or at the end of the day because you recognize, oh, I went off on this. But I went off on this person, but ultimately it had nothing to do with that person, it was a me thing. It was a me thing. So if you close your day out with self-compassion, self-forgiveness, that energy is released. We can begin to take stuff head-on. I was born and raised in Israel, this is something that is very big in the ancient Hebrew culture. You didn't let the sun set and go to bed on certain things. Everybody say about arguing with other people, but how about an argument with yourself? That argument, that, that disconnection between your mind and your heart. So sitting with yourself at the end of the day to say, man, I didn't like how that felt. Or I didn't like how that conversation triggered me, and then go deeper and say, well, I didn't trigger me. You get those moments, you will begin to release mental stress and emotional stagnant energy. So peace and love to everyone, thank you for this moment.
I have to admit myself, thank you, that was beautiful, I love that. Um, I love how everybody is giving us more to build off of and giving us other things to ask ourselves, to question ourselves about, um, going even deeper and taking it a step further, and I think that's what this is about, this is what community is about. Um, would anyone else like to see, have any questions? Any thoughts, wanna share their emotions or share with, you know, an experience that they had recently? That you think would be helpful? Go ahead, Mina.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Hope everyone is well, uh, I guess this came very, I guess much in a timely manner. Um, I know last week I literally left work, um, cause I think everything kinda came crashing down with, you know, dealing with the disappointment with the election. And I, I had a feeling that, you know, it could go either way, so I wasn't necessarily shocked, but very supremely disappointed. Um, and, you know, I had pretty much, last week was like really bad with sleep for me. I actually got to sleep early every night, but I'd wake up at like three AM and couldn't get back to sleep. And then, you know, just like personal stuff and work was getting like really stressful, they implemented a new system. So by the time Thursday morning came around, I was just like done, like I woke up exhausted, I had like three bad dreams literally in a row that morning. Um, and then, you know, I, I woke up, I was gonna call out of work, but I was like, no, you gotta go to work. Um, and I, you know, went to work and my, and I'm, you know, I'm trying to roll with it, cause it was really stressful that day, just with like the new system and it was extremely glitchy. And it was just aggravating. And then my friend, you know, she, um, texted me that one of our classmates, um, they, I guess they, he died. So that was like the final straw that just kinda like broke the camel's back and I literally just like, kinda like broke down. Um, I had to leave work. So I was just, you know, I just had to, you know, just kinda take a minute or whatever, and so I'm trying now to kinda balance, um, I guess just kinda balance things, you know, like I, you know, I'm not gonna let, you know, I guess as far as like politics, you know, I'm not gonna let, you know, give these people, like, you know, my happiness or whatever like that. Like I'm still gonna, you know, try to, you know, do the best I can. At this point, I feel, you know, I just need to, you know, try to be smart in the moves I make, you know, the next four years and, you know, hope, you know, whatever comes, I can, you know, weather whatever. But, you know, I'm not gonna allow myself to get, you know, just completely, you know, distraught or, um, you know, just allow them kinda like take my joy. So, you know, I know a lot of people are, you know, like really upset and, you know, like, you know, just crying and breaking down about the election. I'm like, I, I can't do that, and I refuse, like I said, to give them my happiness, like these are, you know, despicable people. The ones who are about to, you know, enter our government and seeing, you know, the things that they have planned is disturbing. Um, but, you know, I, I can't, you know, give them my, my personal joy and happiness. So, and all I can say, you know, for, I think for me, and kinda everyone's just, you know, plan, be prudent in whatever you do, you know, try to make the best, you know, decisions for you, your family and like-minded individuals. Um, you know, everyone else, you know, they, they may have to fall by the wayside. My best friend, she cut her parents off over the election, her father literally like threatened her physically over Trump. And it's like, it's, it's not that serious. So now they're starting to feel the effects, cause she completely cut both her father and her mother off, cause her mother didn't support her. Um, and so now, you know, they're missing their granddaughter, but she's firm on, you know, like, no, y'all, you know, y'all violated. So it's like, you know, you, you have to kinda set boundaries on, you know, even if it's your loved ones, on, you know, kinda just like for your own personal safety and happiness and everything. So I, I, and, you know, when you sent me the invite yesterday, I was like, this was coming, you know, pretty much at like a perfect time. Cause everyone's kinda worried, you know, like, you know, what are we gonna do, um, you know, kinda going forward, and so this kinda helped kinda put things into perspective and kinda give more support, um, for, you know, anyone who is, you know, maybe a little worried or, um, app, uh, apprehensive or, you know, anxious. So it kinda, you know, at least letting, you know, like, you know, you aren't alone, there are other people who, you know, are out there who you can connect with, who can help you with the game plan for, you know, moving forward and, you know, striving, um, you know, for no matter what political or societal changes may come, so. I appreciate all the information everyone gave as well.
Thank you for sharing that. There's one thing, um, that really led me that you, you said, I didn't feel like going to work, but I knew I had to go to work. And I think that sometimes, and I don't know the work situation, but sometimes we need to prioritize ourselves. Because, and I had to tell myself, if I learn, it's very young, the company will go on, whether I'm there or not. Whoever your company is, if I work for a Fortune five hundred company, if I'm not there, that company will go on, but you know what, if I don't protect my mental health and I don't feed myself physically, do what I need to do, that company won't have a problem with dropping me if I'm not in the right mindset or state to do what it is that they need me to do for them. So maybe not, and you know, your situation may have been different, but I want us all to recognize that they are more important than our companies. We really are, because if you drop dead tomorrow, I promise you, that seat will not stay cold. I promise you, they will find somebody else to fill that seat. So if you need a day for your mental health, I want you to focus on that. Especially during this time period. And if you decide you need a couple of days, you just go to your doctor and they let them know. And they can still write you a note. Again, mental health time is on, is legally required under the Family Medical Leave Act. You can look it up. Go ahead. Are you muted?
So, hi, everyone, um, Charisma firstly, I would like to thank you for putting together such a forum. This is my first time, um, at one of, you know, like a forum like this. And it, you really created a safe space, so I'd like to thank you for that first. Um, secondly, um, Mina, I appreciate what you said, it resonated really well with me. Um, currently, I'm currently, like currently, I am on a journey myself, uh, trying to understand, especially poll selection, um, Brittany and I are co-founders of The Black Spots, so this is how I, um, got to know about this, uh, forum. Um, and Brittany is currently in Rwanda and Charisma is currently in Kenya. And, um, you know, just hearing and, you know, being in touch with a lot of black spats. Um, I've always been toying with the idea of the Great Escape, right? And, um, I guess for me, the stress and the not knowing what is to come and what is to become of people that look like me in a country that, uh, we were never meant to be, uh, fully acclimated into. Um, I, right now, uh, you know, all of the mental health things are very much important to me. But I think I'm taking a different route as far as my mental health, right now, my route is the escape. And, um, it led, you know, you know, being an avid traveler to different countries within Africa, um, I've never been anywhere else that made me feel so welcome, so at home, so at peace. And, um, I think the election was a tipping point for me to, you know, kinda make me go ahead and just say, you know what, this is what I'm going to do and this is the move that I'm going to make. And I'm going to reroute myself in a community, in a culture that is for me. So, um, you know, hearing all of these mental health exercises and things, I, I absolutely appreciate it. And, um, I'm not gonna call my exodus a, a flight method. I'm gonna call it, um, you know, being able to be, like Charisma stated, being able to be in tune with what I need and, um, you know, adjusting my lifestyle to, um, fit what it is that I need mentally, which for me is now the Great Escape. So, I appreciate you all, um, for being here, of course, and, um, thank you.
And please know that, um, whether we call it escape or not, a lot of us on this call have escaped America. If you are an expat and you live abroad, can you do the raise your hand for me? Cause I know we have some expats on here, don't make me call you out, cause I will.
In preparation.
We have some expats here.
I say, I'm in preparation. I'm planning that end of this year.
Yes, we have some people from Rwanda on here, from Kenya on here, so we definitely, um, have a few expats on here. Um, alright, go ahead, Brittany. Let's, let's see.
I was following directions, I was raising my hand, um, but I can't speak, um, to that experience. Um, I am, so, hi, everyone, my name is Brittany, uh, I'm the co-founder of The Black Spot, uh, like Yama just said. I am going into my third year of being a black spat here in, um, Kigali, Rwanda, which is where I actually met Charisma. Um, but I, I actually think that there, there are some of us, in particular, I'm thinking of my auntie and her Carolina, who are just not going to leave, um, and so I wanna create space for those folks as well, because you know, it wasn't meant for us, but that's the way that it, that's the way that the cookie crumbled. And so I am a, a, a black spat who feels deep connection, um, and responsibility to the land of America, which is stolen land, we all know these things and all of that. Um, but I am like twelve generation of my bloodline. Um, and so that means something to me, that soil is very sacred, and I didn't realize that until I moved here to Rwanda. Um, and the things that are deeply rooted in the soil here in Rwanda, um, from the experience of the genocide against the two C. Um, and so there, there are connections that I have made in my personal journey. I am personally someone who will always have a place in two homes, or as James Wall once said, uh, American but without the privilege and all those things, um. So, if you feel like you're on the fence, or you don't know, or it's all those things new, it's possible. it's possible, but you could also just visit and if you don't like it, you can go back. The rainy season, every year I say I'm leaving. Yeah, I'mma tell them, I'm out of here. First of all, I'm leaving. I told, I told them, and then I'm, and I'm still here. And so, I, I, I say all of that to say, um, if you need support with any of us, we are all here to build community in terms of supporting you in the grief that you'll pass through when you start to let go of the romanticized, um, idea that we had of the motherland before we came here. Um, and so the experience is very, yes, you will feel at home, all those things, um, but American imperialism and racism impacts our lives wherever we are. Um, and so if you need support and you want to talk about the real of what the experience is like, the good, the bad, the ugly, I am here, um, in The Black Spot, we do offer like, um, repatriation coaching, if that's something that you're looking for, Charisma. I know Dr. Dan is on the call. I saw Vingasi. I don't know where, uh, she went, but there are folks here to build community, um, if you are trying to leave the States or whether you want to stay.
Thank you, Brittany. So I think the things that you all just said are a great segue into our next speaker. So Brittany, if you can help me share my page.
No problem.
So I want to introduce Ms. Faye Hillary. Um, I think we did a great segue to go into what she is discussing. Um, Faye is an internationally recognized.
This meeting is being recorded.
Faye is a reckon, uh, internationally recognized travel entrepreneur, a coffee exporter, and owner of a medical tourism company. Based in Kenya, she leads a luxury travel concierge company in 13 countries, a consulting firm, and a construction company within Kenya. Faye empowers BIPOC individuals to move abroad, thrive as expats, and build generational legacies. With experience in corporate America and entrepreneurship, she helps clients turn passions into successful global businesses. Her energy and commitment to the positive change, to positive change inspires clients to achieve their dreams and best goals. So take it away, Ms. Faye.
All right, all right. I mean, I mute myself. I am so ready. I'm very excited about being here today with you guys. It's, you know, the climate in the world right now, not just in the U.S., but the climate in the world right now has been so toxic that I know a lot of people just need something different. So pop this in. So I'm here to provide you that information for something different. I'm a bit long-winded. Charisma, thank you so much for having me here. Before I get started, how much time do I have? Because I'm a long-winded one.
So we, um, you have an hour and that, that will include your Q and A discussion period.
Okay, perfect.
So for us, seven.
Okay, perfect. Um, so let me just tell you my story before I get started. So I have been an expat for many years. I have lived in seven countries abroad. Um, yeah, it's been a journey. You have to turn to me. Sorry, let me mute my. Hold on, let me just change computers real quick. I think I'm muted.
No, you're not muted. We can hear you.
Okay, one sec. Let me just swap these computers. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
All right, I was having some technical difficulties, so I was on my phone, but now it's been, uh, fixed. So here I am. So, all right, is my video on? Is everything working? Y'all seeing me here? Everything's good?
Yes, ma'am.
So I have been living abroad for quite some time now. Um, I have lived in seven countries, as I said before. Uh, I think, you know, I have to say, which I always say to people, moving abroad has been the best decision I've ever made for my life. And I always say this, and it's so true, it's still true today. My worst day as an expat is much better than my best day when I was living in the U.S., living that full cycle of, you know, work, eat, sleep, repeat, over and over and over and over again. So that was really challenging for me. And I think when we're in it, we don't so much notice it, but when we get out of it, we're like, oh, my God, I feel so free. And so that's the freedom that, uh, uh, the reason why I share this with people because I want you to experience this level of freedom because this has literally changed my life. The first country I moved abroad to was Colombia. And while I was in Colombia, let me tell you, what literally the first time I got off the flight, and I wasn't planning to move, by the way, when I got off the flight, it felt like the weight that had been on my shoulders was just removed. And I was just like, oh, my God, I feel so light. I feel so free. And so that is the thing that actually got me to move abroad because, um, I, I don't know if you guys know my story, but I, uh, initially went on a sabbatical. Uh, the reason why I went on sabbaticals because I lost my mom. My mom died at age 57. So I said to myself, so if you have the same amount of time as your mom, you have 20 years, what would you like to do with your 20 years? And I didn't want to spend my life, my 20 years, if that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying I'm gonna die in 20 years. I'm just saying, if that is the cycle though, I don't want to spend my life in this cycle, eat, sleep, you know, work, repeat. Like, you know, you go to work and these jobs are like, oh, you're like, hey, I need a vacation. They're like, no business needs. And I'm like, I'm a human. Like, the business needs can't come before me, right? But they don't think that way. They think about the corporate needs, the business needs. And so I was like, I don't want to spend my 20 if that's all I get because my mom didn't know she would have, you know, leave at 57, leave this earth at 57. But her goal was to travel the world. She wanted to be a missionary. You know, she wanted to do all these great things. She had all these plans for her retirement. And, you know, we hear a lot of people making plans for retirement, but at the end of the day, does anyone actually, I mean, how many people actually make it? The people who do make it to retirement, a lot of them die very quickly because they're so used to being in this whole cycle, this whole cycle and doing life in this way. When they get their freedom, they don't know what to do with it. They're just like, what do I do? I'm old. The retirement age in the U.S. is 66 and a half. It may have changed, but since I last checked, I think it was 66 and a half. But 66 and a half, gotta do it 66 and a half, you know? And you're not still working, so you don't have.
Is she frozen forever? Or just me?
Nope, she is. I was asking the same thing. Yep.
Okay. Let's see.
She's re. All right, I'm gonna have to rough this out on this phone because this is, this computer's so blue. Hold on, give me a second.
Now, this is one of the things that you all may deal with as an expat. We do not always have the best internet signal.
We have problems, let me tell you. So, uh, it happens quite regularly, so we expect it. Um, but I have my phone right here, just off standby, just in case. But, you know, so 66 and a half, as, as someone telling you, this is when you can live your life at 66 and a half, like, oh, my God, like, that takes me out. 66 and a half until I can travel the world and do what I want to do? Uh, no, sir, not for me. So I decided to just move. So I went on my sabbatical, came back to work, and the powers that be made a mistake. Like, my mom had died and I guess my boss didn't tell them. So everybody thought I just kind of left work without, you know, letting people know. So because they made a big judgment, um, my boss was like, my boss's boss was like, hey, you know what? Go back on your sabbatical. Enjoy yourself. Come back in six months. So I was like, great. But what she didn't know, that six months was gonna take her out because after six months, I was like meeting with expats and I was like, my vacation is these people's lives. How is that possible? So I did the thing we do at work because I worked in L.A. Entertainment, the largest entertainment country, company in the world. So I was like, listen, this is what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna do the same thing I do at work. I meet, have breakfast, lunch, and dinner meetings every single day and sometimes drinks after. So I'm gonna do that every day to maximize my time so I can know exactly what these people are doing. So everybody who is here, I applaud you because you're figuring it out, you're learning a way, you're, you're seeing what other people have done and you're replicating. And I think that's amazing. So congratulations to you for making at least this first step of getting here to get the information. So once I got back, I was like, okay, I got kind of restless and I was like, what I have to do, um, in order to move to this next step? Because I'm very strategic minded. I was like, I need a strategy. And so here was my strategy. So I put together on a first list, the first thing, because I'm like, look, I'm not a trust fund kid. I have to work. All of my money comes from my job. I have bills to pay. How can I move abroad? So that was my first question. So the answer to that question was, I need a strategy in order to save some money. So I was like, well, how much money do I actually need to live? So what I did was I put everything, all my bills on a sheet of paper. And so once I put this, the bills on a sheet of paper, I, I discovered that if I leave the country, most of these bills won't come due. I won't need to pay for this thing. I won't need to do that thing. Like, I can live my life. The only thing I actually needed on that list, you know, you have car note, you have like, you know, all these things you have to pay. I was like, the only actual thing I need from this list is my cell phone. If I leave the country, I won't need a car. I won't need car insurance. I won't need rental insurance. I won't need rent. I won't need all of these things that I was carrying and as burdens because I was like, hey, I live on this money. So all these, these burdens I was carrying would just be alleviated by just moving abroad. And so I was like, okay, well, let's do it. So then my next goal was to figure out how much it was gonna cost to live in Colombia because this is the place where I discovered that people can do that. And not just people, but people who look like us. So a lot of times we come across people and we're like, hey, they do stuff, but, you know, things are different for them. You know, they were raised differently. They have a different family structure. They have a different system. Deals to pay. I have family, you know, they need me, you know, so we think differently. So once I saw the people who looked like me doing this, I was like, if you, and by the way, part of me was like, y'all ain't really like, just coming over here figuring it out. Like, y'all have some kind of trust fund or you have some kind of savings or family or something. But as it turns out, they were just doing the same thing I was planning to do. So here's what I did. So instead of just saying, hey, I'm quitting my job and leaving, the strategy for me was, I need to figure out how I can make a certain amount of money based on the cost of living in the place where I was going, how I can make that amount of money and, and also live, right? And by the way, I didn't want, I didn't really want to be working all the time because I'm just like, should I move abroad for the same lifestyle? So I didn't want to do that. So I was like, how can I live and work the minimum number of hours and still make enough to live? And so my budget was, when I moved abroad, was $1,000 a month. So first off, I refused to live any place, and this is all my seven countries. I refused to live any place where my budget would go over $1,000 a month. Okay, I know you think like, oh, I spend that on shoes. And I get it, but once you move abroad, sometimes these things don't really matter. I mean, if you're coming to Kenya trying to wear your nice shoes, I mean, you're gonna end up in a ditch because it's muddy and it's dirt and gravel and stuff. And so you're just gonna mess up those shoes. Like, honestly, here, I just wear sneakers every day. So I was looking at like the things that I actually needed and I was like, look, $1,000 can do it because my expenses were about $370 a month. So if I made $1,000, think about it, you know? I could cover all of my expenses and still do what I want to do and save, by the way, right? I'm not saving a ton of money, but I'm saving towards the lifestyle that I'm living here. So I found a place that was a two-bedroom, two, two-bedroom, one bath. Um, so that was in my budget. I also used Uber, so I didn't need to buy car insurance. So that was in my budget. Um, then electricity was pretty cheap, so that was in my budget. So my budget came to around $370 per month. And so I figured, I just need a job that can pay me at least $1,000 so I can still save, still what I want to do. But I also wanted to start a business. So I was like, let me try to figure this out. So I initially just started hustling hard. Like, the thing you have to do before you leave, you have to hustle hard because I had my full-time job. And remember, I'm in this job making six figures. But the way you live in your life too, you live, you're living paycheck to paycheck because the more you get, the more you want. Okay, now I have a roommate. I don't make much. I have a roommate. Now I make more. Now I get the one bedroom. Now I make even more. Now I get the two bedroom, you know? Now I have more, I'm gonna buy a house. So the more money you make, the more you spend. I started out with a Toyota and now I need the Lexus, you know? So you have to take these things into account that won't be a fact, a factor when you move abroad. So I was like, okay, cool. I'm eliminating all these things. So my full-time job, I'm gonna keep that salary, but every additional expense that I don't absolutely need, I'm gonna eliminate that. My cable was $250 a month. Got rid of cable. My internet, I had the highest package. Got rid of that. Um, car insurance, I sold the car. Well, I, I scheduled it to be sold for right when I was leaving. Um, so all the little bills, the things that I had in the house, I sold everything. So I didn't necessarily, you know, have these things I was lugging with me, plus I was saving the money. So here's my schedule. And this is intense, but I did it in five months because I needed to do it. Mentally, I needed to get out of there. And I think a lot of people are in that space right now where you're like, mentally, I need to check out of this place. And that's where I was. And so what I did was, I got a job teaching English online, okay? So, and I started that before I left because I wanted to know that I could maintain it. I'm not a teacher. I just, I'm a lawyer. You know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to figure out how to make it work. And a lot of people are like, oh, you go from being a lawyer to school teacher? Yes, because as for peace of mind, I'll do whatever is necessary. Because I know the type of brain that I have, and you guys are smart too. Whatever the job you do, you can make something greater for yourself abroad. Because I was thinking to myself at the time, I was an executive, not, uh, working as a lawyer at the time at, uh, my company. But I was like, you know what? I'm closing like multi-million dollar deals a day. Imagine if I just did one of these for myself, like just one. Can you imagine? Just one. And I'll be set, right? And so I was like, if I can do that for them, I'm certain I can do it for myself. I just need to figure it out before I leave. So just to get myself out the door. So I got this English teaching job. I would teach English from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. every day, okay? And then when I got home from work, and it's just throwing things in there, but after work, I also taught too. So I taught like freelance students after work. So this was like a set amount of hours. But with the five to eight, I was able to make $1,000 just with that job, working from 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. every day. And I'm like, bet, that'll be great. Because once I move, I can totally do five to eight and I have my whole day free. Now, in addition to that, I got a sales job. The sales job was paying like $750 per sale plus bonus. So I was like, okay, bet, I can do that too. Now I'm really building income for myself. So now I'm working the English teaching job, I'm working the sales job, and I'm working my full-time job. So I'm banking all that money, right? In addition to that, on my lunch break, I would do apartment secret shopping. So I would go basically look at apartments and they will pay you like, I would spend 30 minutes, I was called before I, I went. I'm like, hey, I need to be in and out in 30 minutes because I knew I had to be back at work. So I would go to the secret shopping gig, in and out 30 minutes, back at work, eat at my desk, that's $150. I'm certain they pay more these days because that was many years ago, but that's how much I made at the time. So after that, I would come home, I would either, so my, uh, teaching, teaching job was kind of later in the evening. So I was like, cool, I can drive Uber right after work. From like six to nine, I could drive Uber. You know, that didn't last long because I was a little intense. It was like wearing tear and a cross. I was like, yeah, that didn't work. But still, I was able to work all these side hustles and make a lot of money. In five months, I was able to save $30,000. $30,000. And I was like, what did I think of this before I was moving abroad? I could have been living well, you know? So, because you know, but I guess like we get that prideful thing like, oh, I can't teach English, I'm a lawyer, I can't do this, I'm an executive, you know? But when you have a goal and you need to meet it, you put that pride aside and you just do what you have to do. So let's fast forward five months. So I actually moved abroad. So I sold everything, got rid of everything I had. Literally, the day I left, I had my bicycle because I really love that bicycle. Uh, my bicycle, I had two suitcase, two large suitcases, two carry-on suitcases. And I was gone. And so I got on the plane and it was like the most nervous I probably had ever felt. I was just like, oh, my God, like this is so different. Like, what am I doing with my life? I'm leaving. You know, everything I know and love. And, and at first I didn't really do it in the way that it should be done, but I'll tell you more about that down the line. So I got to Colombia. Remember I told you when I get to Colombia, it feels like somebody just takes the weight off my shoulder and put it in the locker. Now, by the way, it's still there. So when you get ready to fly out, that baggage is still there and it comes right back on your shoulders when you get back, get ready to go back to the U.S., which I noticed, by the way. So got to Colombia, stayed in my Airbnb. By the way, I stayed in Airbnb for years, like many years before I actually got a long-term place. Um, but as I was in Colombia, I got fired from the English teaching job. Yeah, because I was always like, okay, y'all wanna go out? Cool, I'm doing that. Or I went out the night before, I couldn't wake up, so I got fired. Then the sales job, I was like, you know, I can't work that many hours. Like, give me fewer hours because I can't be working around eight hours a day. Like, I might as well go home and do that and make six figures. So I was like, no, I don't wanna, I'll work like four hours a day. And they fired me because they were like, hey, you can't make four hours a day. And I was like, okay, shoot. But I was like, I have this savings, but I don't want to spend it because this is like, you know, what I'm counting on to get me through emergencies. So one night I was online, I was trying to figure out how am I gonna So one night I was online, I was trying to figure out how am I gonna make money? Lo and behold, Upwork showed up. And I was like, oh my God, up, wait, Upwork? So I'm looking at the jobs on Upwork, like the things you can do online? And I was like, so I could use the same skills I used in my job to work online? That night, I signed up my profile on Upwork and posted myself. That night, I got a job drafting a contract, paid me fifteen hundred dollars, took me ten minutes to draft that agreement. And I was like, oh my God, I've been working like hard instead of smart this whole time. So then I was like, I'll just do this. But as I was doing that, I was, remember I was living in Airbnb. And so I was like, you know what? Let me just count these people's money. How much are you really making from having this Airbnb? And I don't know if you know anything about apartments in Colombia, but it'll be a house, maybe like ten bedrooms. You know, they used to at some point, I guess, all lived together. So it'd be like ten bedrooms. And I was like, well, hold on. So it's ten bedrooms here, we're all renting a room, we pay X amount of dollars per night, they're always booked and busy. So I was like, doing the math, I was like, oh my God, oh my God, I gotta get into this business. So I got into the Airbnb business and I didn't buy property because remember I only had thirty thousand, right? Cause I hadn't saved before then, which is terrible, but you know how it is. So I took, um, I rented three apartments. And so what I did with the thirty thousand is that I furnished the apartment. I put stuff in there, you know? I made them like Instagram worthy because those are the ones you book. Y'all know Instagram worthy ones. So I was like, let me make this Instagram worthy. So I had three apartments and stuff was going really well. And I added some services. I added the little food. You know how you go in the hotels, you open their fridge and there's like the, the alcohol and there's like the little whatever, the snacks you can buy? So I was like, bet, I'm gonna do that too. So I went to their equivalent version of Costco, bought all the stuff, stocked the stuff, where they would use stuff, they would pay. So on and so forth. Then I noticed, I was like, you know what? A lot of these people always asking me for transport, you know, what are they able to eat? You know, where do they get massages? Uh, what tours to go on? You know, all these kinds of things. And I was like, hmm, I was like, you know what? I'm gonna start doing that. So I started doing all these tours and transport and like basically being a concierge service within the apartment. Because you know, when you go to a hotel, they have a concierge, you can always ask the concierge, where should I eat? I want lobster, you know? So I became that for them. And so I started, I, I got a little restless. And I was like, you know, I thought moving abroad was gonna be it for me. I thought it was gonna make me feel like I didn't need to go on vacation, but I did. So I was like, you know, I'm kinda like burned out. I need a vacation. So I took a vacation, traveled to, I think sixteen countries, eight African countries, eight European countries. And so as I traveled to these countries, like I'm having a good time. Like, I was in Kenya and y'all know Kenya is a whole vibe. They love the party. So I was like, okay, bet. So I had a really good time. And I was like, you know, I should come here for a year, you know? Just, I didn't, it wasn't like serious. I just, you know, thought, oh, maybe I should come here for a year. Went back to Colombia and I was like, you know what? That business was a hassle to run while I was traveling. Like I hated it. Cause you know, Colombians or other foreigners can't give the same level of service we can. So people always wanted me and calling me and where is she and why is she not here? And it was hurting my reviews. And I was like, you know what? I'm gonna get out of this Airbnb business and I'm gonna start just the travel concierge company. Where I, where I do the tour, the transport and, you know, overall concierge services. You wanna go to, you know, you have your restaurants laid out, you have your massage, you know, lined up, whatever it is. I offered all the things. And so, um, and I was gonna get out of the Airbnb business. I had a good plan to do it. But I hadn't done it yet because I'm like, you know, the money is still rolling in. But I guess I was supposed to be here in Kenya. So I guess God did a whole thing. Because he got me out of Colombia, I lost every apartment that I had because I didn't purchase, remember I rented. So the people were being crazy. They were bringing, the Airbnb guests were bringing prizes to sit in there. They were being loud. And the last straw, one of my units, I got kicked out because, um, there was a family. You think a family is gonna be good, but they got into a, a knockdown, drag-out fight. The people called the police and I was evicted. And so I was like, shoot. And in the place where I was staying, I had sublease. She broke up with her boyfriend when they moved to Japan. So she was like, I'm coming back. I need my place back. And I'm like, oh my God. And I was like, okay, well, I guess I'm going to Kenya. So I just packed up everything, put it in storage. I was like, I'll be back. I'm just gonna stay a year. Um, yeah, six years later, but, uh, moved to Kenya. The day I arrived in Kenya, um, which is another fortunate thing. A lot of people tell you, you can't move abroad because your life will stop. You still need to get married. You still need to have kids. You can't do this until you have your life together. Well, I did it. I was a single woman, thirty-seven years old. And I'm like, hey, at that point, because of the brainwashing I experienced in the US, it was like you're thirty-seven, you're never gonna be married, you're never gonna have kids, move on with your life. So I was like, cool. I was like, hey, I've run out of time anyway. I'm gonna go live my best life. So came over, the day I landed, I met my husband. So if, if people are telling you, hey, you can't live your life, you can't get married, you can't do these things when you're abroad, you absolutely can't. So the reason why I stayed in Kenya for six years is because I married a Kenyan. So life does continue. You can have a fruitful life. You can build relationships. You can have a good life. You just need to just, you know, have the mindset of, I'm just gonna enjoy my life. And I always say this, but I think you'll find the person you love when you're doing what you love. Cause they can see you're happy. They can see, you know, everything you're doing, you're doing in furthest of your own happiness. I don't need you per se. And I don't like that mentality, but I don't, I don't need you because here I am, traveling the world, living all over the world without someone. Um, as a matter of fact, when I got to Kenya, I only stayed for four months. I had met him, but I only stayed for four months because Kenya's expensive. Like tourism can tell you, it's expensive in Kenya. So I was like, you know, but this is not working out. So ergo, I moved to the other country. So I lived, I went and moved to South Africa, was there for a while. I felt like the climate was too violent, so too much crime. So I left there. Um, I moved to Turkey. Um, I loved Turkey until I personally experienced violence and I couldn't shake it. So I moved. Um, I also lived in Bali and that was short-lived because that's around the time my husband and I were kinda figuring things out. And I also lived in London for a bit, but you know, London is way too much. And by the way, every place I lived on a thousand dollar budget. But London tricked me because I was staying with a friend. So, and she was happy for me to stay there and, you know, pay a little bit of money or whatever. But I was like, in real life? This is not in my budget. So that was out of the question. So I moved to a lot of different places, just, you know, mainly like, just being there long-term to figure out if this place was for me. And that's about the time when my husband stepped up and he was like, hey, hey, let me marry you and just stay in Kenya. So I was like, okay, bet. Um, so I did, like, he married me and I stayed here and, you know, it's been good. It's, it hasn't been, um, I think progressively it's gotten very different from the, the Kenya that I arrived to. Um, so things have been a bit challenging for me, um, here. And, um, so I'm making my exit to the eighth country, just FYI. Um, but I think when you, for me, I was like, I'm feeling unsettled, unhappy. Should I stay here and be unsettled and unhappy or move somewhere else? And that's the thing, I think someone mentioned that earlier, like, you know, once you get to a place, you're not stuck there for life. Like that's a US mentality. They're telling you, hey, you have your two and a half kids, you know, your white picket fence, you stay in that house forever. You know, but that's not, that's not the decision you have to make. Like I've lived in, you know, seven countries. I'm on my way to the eighth country. And like, I still feel like, once I get to number eight, I'm leaving again. Like, I wanna continue to experience. I wanna keep investing. You know, and, and Kenya, well, and you know, Columbia, I started investing, started doing business and stuff like that. And, and I learned a lot, like along the way. I think the hardest place I've ever done business is in Kenya. You know, I've done, literally done businesses all over the world, but Kenya is probably the most difficult place because nothing's set in stone. And you kinda have to be flexible with that when you move abroad, because all the systems don't work like they do in the US, trust me. Now, with that said, some countries are far more palatable than others. Like, for example, I could only live in South Africa or Kenya and Africa. That's just, I can't live in too underdeveloped space. But I think when you decide to move abroad, you have to decide for yourself, hey, who am I first of all? And what are my non-negotiables? My non-negotiables is like super underdevelopment and also crime. Like I don't like to be feeling like I have to live on guard all the time. I just wanna be free. Because I'm like, if I need to be a bomber, I can go back home for that. And by the way, as the, the young lady said earlier, you can always go home. The door will always be open. A lot of people somehow think that when you move abroad, you have to give up your citizenship. No, not true. I'm still a US citizen. I don't have any other citizenship. I am a permanent resident in Kenya. Um, and a lot of people frowned upon this, but I was, in the other countries, I was living dirty. So basically in Colombia, I lived there for two years, but I never got, I lived, I lived on tourist visa the whole time. So I never got any form of residency. Which you can do as an American because I was there for about, you know, I would stay for six months, which they gave you. Then I would travel. We call them visa runs. Go to another country and come back. A lot of people are living on tourist visas and doing visa runs. With that said, if you're not an American or you don't have one of those, you know, strong passports, you have to do something else. You have to make sure you follow the rules of the country. But for me, I was living dirty. I'm like, it's working for me. I'm American. They, they take me anywhere. And they usually give me sixty to ninety days. So I was like, I'll take advantage of that. You leave the country, you can come back the next day. And still, you know, your clock starts over. So that's what I did in Kenya also. I did it in every country. Um, I did it in Kenya when I first got here as well, but I married someone, so they give you like a dependent pass and it's crazy because they don't let you work. It's a lot. But, um, but I was able to get some level of residency. So this is the first place I've ever gotten residency. And I've lived abroad for about ten years. So think about one. So a lot of people are thinking like, oh, I gotta go get the passport and what are the rules? And then some countries, they are strict. Like if you go on to Portugal, like you can't just show up to that place. You can't just be like, hey, I'm gonna go live in Portugal and I'm just gonna live dirty. They don't do that. You can't live dirty. You will get kicked out and deported. You also can't do that in Indonesia. You will get kicked out and deported. So you have to make sure you follow the rules of the land. But what I will say is that I've done business in several countries, thirteen countries now and counting. And, um, you know, doing business abroad, it seems like very heavy and like a big to-do, but it's actually easier for us. Now think about it. You live in the US and, and US is just for all intents and purposes, just what it is. It's on a good old boy system. So a lot of industries you can't get into. For example, we own a construction company here in Kenya. I couldn't do that in the US. Like as a matter of fact, I was, we own heavy, we owned heavy equipment, um, construction equipment. And so I went to the US, I was like, hey, you know, I need to order some parts. Let me order the parts. And so when I called the guy, the parts guy, they're like, which company? And I was like, oh, the purple line. And, uh, they're like, no, no, no. Which company do you work for? And I'm like, no, it, the company is the purple. I didn't say I own it. I'm like, the company is the purple line. And they're like, no, no, no. And he just couldn't wrap his mind around the fact that somebody could own a construction company outside of these major good old boy companies. And I'm like, listen, I own a, a construction company outside of the US. I just need to order parts. And so I ordered my parts and I thought that was the funniest thing because I'm like, I could not do this business in the US because I'd never get in. There are barriers to entry. Those same barriers do not exist in most countries abroad, because if you got the money, they got the time. So you gotta realize, I can now invest abroad. I can, what I didn't know, another thing is that like bonds abroad, like I just thought like, hey, you just wanna buy US bonds. But if you look at the Kenya bonds, they're very valuable. Like you're making about five percent in the US or whatever that number is. And here you're making about fourteen percent interest on bonds. So I was like, oh my God, like what? So there are all these different types of investments you can get into. Since I've been here, I've just learned a lot. So we're exporting coffee from Kenya to the US. You know, Kenya is some of the best coffee in the world. Most countries mix their coffee, their lower grade coffees, that's what I have, with Kenyan coffee, coffee. And that takes their grade up a notch, which means their coffee is now more valuable because they mixed it with Kenyan coffee. Kenyan coffee is the most expensive because it's the best coffee, East African coffee generally. So did that business here, got a license. And now because I have a license here in Kenya, I can buy coffee all over East Africa. And I could export that coffee anywhere in the world. So, and we have, and it's just been a really good experience and that's such an easy business. And so for me, I don't get in businesses that lock me in. I don't need to be locked in. Like I don't need to be tied down. Like you, I told you before, I like to move. I like to keep it moving. So I can't be tied down. So any business I have, and I love to travel, so I'm always traveling, like at least two or three times a month. So during that, so doing business, I don't want it to hold me back where I can't, you know, do my thing. So all the businesses that I run, I can do them all from my phone. So, and you might say, how do you do that? It's because I have people in place. I have processes in place. And through those processes, I just send an email like, hey, we got thirty-six ton order. Here's the shipping address. Boom. I send the money, whatever, it's done. You know, even with the construction company, people were really baffled by that, how I can do that on my phone. But we hired a broker for every process. We hired a broker to, um, take care of the machines. We hired a broker to get the job. We have a broker to get the money. You know, we have a broker to pay the employees. We have a broker to fix the machines. So we didn't have to do a lot of work. I've since sold that business because that got to be too intense for me. But, uh, but I will tell you, that's a business, I've never been to a construction site in my life, period. And I had a construction company. And that's what you can do when you know the right things. Because a lot of times, like, we're so focused on the things that people have told us that we can do. You know, instead of just exploring. And if you explore the world, you can see there's so many opportunities here. We invested in some property, um, in Kenya. And the property is like a hotel. You buy your unit and then the property, you know, the company, they furnish it. They rent it, they market it, they take care of the guests, like all the things and you just get profit. So it's like, it's things like that that you don't really learn about from being at home. And so, and then it sounds so far-fetched in comparison to what you're accustomed to. So we've done like a number of businesses and it's just been really good for me. And it's helped me get out of that thousand dollar a month bracket because I know y'all say, you still live on thousands? No. But, uh, but now it's two of us. So what, we don't live on much more. It's like, it's between the two of us, if it was two thousand plus a little bit. So we live on twenty-five hundred dollars a month. And I'll just break down how I live. I have a five bedroom, five bath, it's apartment. Um, but I have that. Uh, we have a car, we have insurance and all that good stuff, but our budget does not exceed, and we eat. I eat a lot. I love food. But we, so our budget doesn't go over twenty-five hundred dollars a month and that's for two of us. So we still manage to live on a reasonable budget because we live abroad. Um, the next country will be living on pretty much, our monthly budget will probably be about a hundred dollars a month. So that's things you can have access to when you live abroad. And so I just wanted to encourage you today and inspire you because it's like, a lot of times we see this moving abroad as such like a huge thing to do. But it's actually not that big of a deal. Like, as a matter of fact, it's not only easier than it is living in the US. But, you know, it's, it's a free life, you know? I feel like so free and, you know, even like when I was in the US, I was paying like, I don't know, three hundred dollars a month for car insurance. Here I pay four hundred dollars a year, you know, a year. And it's not even forty hundred, I'm just rounding to USD, but it's about forty thousand shillings per year. So that's probably around three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars. So my lifestyle is just easier, it's cheaper. We don't spend a lot of money for anything. We had something to repair today at the house. We paid that guy fifteen dollars, two thousand shillings to come in and fix electronics, you know? And so life is so much different. It's sometimes we can only see it through our US lenses. But if we can look outside of ourselves and listen to people who have had the experience, you'll see that you can live abroad. You can do all these things and it's gonna cost you less money. You know, if you wanna save money for retirement and build a legacy for your family, move abroad. Because now, you know, I live in, um, a five bedroom, five bath, I pay thirteen thousand shillings a month, which is around a hun, a thousand dollars a month. For like this big place, like, and we have guests come all the time, all the, so people are always in our house. And we don't charge them. People are like, hey, we pay a thousand dollars. Like come anytime, visit us. And it's allowed us to be more generous and we can feed them. We can do all these things because, you know, our lifestyle is not burdening us. Like, like we basically are working because, you know, to pay the minimal bills. Like, you know, I think the US thing is that, you know, you have to work to, what's it said? I think it's work to live or eat, live, live to work. But like you live to work in the US, but here or abroad, you work to just live. Like, hey, I'm just working just to pay these little bills. You know, after I paid these little bills, I'm cool. I'm traveling, I'm living my life. You know, I started a business and a lot of us here express, not just me, a lot of us start businesses. And I start businesses all over the world. Honestly, I never could have found, by the way, not an entrepreneurial kind of person. Like my dad was an entrepreneur and I hated it. I was like, ooh, you always struggling, taxes, all that kinda stuff, mm-mm, you know? And I never wanted to do it. I never saw myself being that entrepreneurial. But once I've done it abroad, I'm like, absolutely, I could do it. By the way, I've never do it in the US. But abroad, they just, it's just so easy, you know? Like literally, I run all of my businesses from the phone. So anyway, I, and it, these are not brag. These are just, I'm telling you what you can expect to live for your life. I mean, I'm telling you what you can expect when you move abroad. You won't be on a struggle bus. You will live so much better. Like I always tell people, like, I'm living like a queen over here. I got a, a driver, I got a cook, I got a maid, like, and all of that, again, in my twenty-five hundred dollars a month. You know, so I'm living quite well and that's how you can live too. As a matter of fact, I'm like, how do I live in the US? Like I have to work like eight to ten hours a day or more. Then I had to come home and clean and cook. And now I, I look back and I'm like, I didn't really clean as much as I could have, you know? Because like, I mean, how often are you cleaning like the baseboards? You know what I mean? How do you clean it inside the lampshade? Like, we're not doing that because we don't have the time. So it's like, you know, now I'm like, oh no, honey, you gotta clean them baseboards. You know, stuff that I couldn't do for myself. But now I've hired someone. And so it makes my life much easier. So I can't even like see myself. That's why I could never go back. Cause I can't see myself now like being a slave to my life. You know, and if you have kids, you gotta like take care of the kids and do all the things. Here, you can have a nanny, you're paying like a hundred dollars a month. You know, so I'm just like, I can't, I can't go back to being a slave to life. Like, I need to live my life. And again, my mom passed away at fifty-seven years old and I live for her. I live for the people in the US who can't live this way. I live for my family and friends who are like, oh, I would never move abroad. And they just don't know what it's like. They haven't experienced it. And so I live for everybody. I live for all of you guys. And so, and I don't wanna have to live for all of you because you showed up today. I want you to live for yourselves. Like I want you to live a life of freedom. I want you to love your life. And so that's my complete brand for life, discovering a life you love. And I'm like, if I don't discover a life I love, what am I doing? If I'm just living to go to work and, you know, take, make sure this, whoever owns this company is rich and thriving, they don't make, that's what I would think about when I was traveling. they're all making, that's what I would think about when I was traveling. I was like, you know what? The people who own this company, like their children's children's children are on an island somewhere, living the best life while I'm working hard. I'm making millions of dollars every day for them. What am I getting out of it? And so I was like, you know, once I started to look at it in that way, I was like, whatever I do for you, I have the skill sets. I've built the skills. I've, I've gotten education. I've done whatever I need to do. So now I need to do that for myself. And you can easily. It's just you need someone to walk you through, to take you step by step, to build a strategy for your life. And that's it. And let me tell you, a lot of people ask me about healthcare, so I'll hit on that too. Um, healthcare, honestly, you can pay cash. I don't recommend you live on a cash basis for your healthcare, but you can. Like I had surgery and I paid cash, eleven hundred dollars. Imagine in the US, you know what I mean? That's a hundred thousand minimum. But I paid, I paid a thousand dollars, eleven hundred dollars for my surgery. And so healthcare is cheap, but I always say, still get healthcare. I use um, SafetyWing, um, and it's healthcare that works all over the world, including they'll cover you for six months if you're in a US like visiting. They won't cover you for a whole year because US healthcare is expensive, but they'll cover you for like six months. Or actually, I think thirty days. My bad, take that back. Thirty days. They'll cover you for thirty days while you're in a USA. So it's like, you know, you don't have that burden. And by the way, the health insurance is forty dollars a month. Forty dollars a month. I'm sure that's how much you pay. You probably pay more with your little co-pays and with your um, your work plans. You know, they still charge you a certain amount. I'm certain you pay more than forty dollars. I pay forty dollars a month for my, well, actually it just went up because I got older. Uh, so now I pay sixty. But until you get to age forty, you pay forty dollars a month. And once you turn forty, they change the rate to sixty dollars a month. Can you imagine? That takes care of all of your healthcare needs. If you have an emergency, if you have a surgery, if you need to get your teeth cleaned, whatever it is, all of that is covered because outside of the US, healthcare is expensive. And Charisma, I'm sure she's told you, I can go to the pharmacy and pick up a prescription for anything I want. Now, by the way, when you're in the US, you have to go to a doctor. So that's the doctor's visit you gotta pay for. Whether it's your copay or whatever it is, you still gotta pay or you have to have health insurance to do it. So you go to the doctor, get up, and you know what's wrong. Like I know what it is. I always get this, you know? Like I got headaches, whatever. I know what it is. So now I gotta go to a doctor, pay you. Then if I pay you, I gotta go to the pharmacy. Here I can just run right to the pharmacy and pick it up. Prescriptions are like, I got a prescription, yeah, they have like two hundred shillings. That's like less than a dollar for you, you know? So life is so much cheaper. Like we can do life. And I don't know why health insurances or health costs are so much more expensive in the US. Like my friends and family come here for medication. Because it's like, why am I gonna pay, you know, a hundred dollars for one pill when I can get twenty in Kenya for a dollar? So it's like, you know, healthcare is so expensive. So that's why I do medical tourism. Because I'm like, hey, I gotta help y'all. Let me help, let me help you, you know what I mean? Because, you know, for one thing that I actually do, my medical tourism is, one thing I focus on is IVF and surrogacy. Because you know, in the US, IVF is like a hundred thousand dollars minimum. A surrogate is a hundred thousand minimum. Plus you have to pay their healthcare and all of those kind of crazy stuff. It's crazy. Here, uh, IVF probably cost me a lot, eight, a thousand dollars. And then surrogacy costs about, you pay the girl like eight thousand dollars for the IVF. If that, I don't think it's that expensive. But it's like, you know, you, you can live like more free because you have these things covered for yourself. You don't have to worry about all the things you have to worry about in the US. Life is just easier. So if you're on the fence about moving abroad, please, if you didn't listen to anything else I said today, please do yourself a favor, live your best life. Do like me and all the other experts on the call, discover a life you love today. Like there's no need to wait. Now, mind you, I'm not telling you to leave today, but I'm saying make the decision today. And once you make the decision, put together a strategy to execute. So you can do it in six months to a year. I do recommend at least waiting a year. I did it in five months, but it was a little rushed. I feel like I could have made at least sixty thousand if I took my time. But you know, do it today. At least make the decision today. But you can do this. Like you have people like me, you have Charisma, the other expats on the line, we got you. We are supporting you. A lot of people are thinking when they get on these calls, like we're selling, selling, selling. We're not selling anything. We just wanna help you live a life of freedom. We want you to discover a life you love. I don't get paid anything to talk to you today. I just wanna help you. So whatever I can do, if you need to DM me or whatever, email me or whatever, I'm happy to help you. Because I want you to be in the same position I am telling somebody else. Because once we get in these seats, we have to pay it forward. So I'll caution you once again. If you're not happy with your life in the US, or even if you think it's great, but then I just told you some stuff and now you're like, man, man, that's so great. Like please, take the steps to get out of there. Move abroad. By the way, you can still go back. I used to miss a lot of family events and I hated that. So what I did was, you make more money, you save more. So I was like, you know what? Every family event, I'm gonna show up. I go home so much now they're tired of seeing. They're like, why are you always here? You know? But you don't have to live a life where you cut yourself off from the world. Once you leave the country, you can still come back. Like it's an open door policy. You're still a citizen. You can still operate within the country. You can get another job. So if you leave, it doesn't mean like it's a life sentence. Oh, I'm done with the US. I can't go back ever. No, I can go back tomorrow and apply for a job. We can all do that. Don't think, you know, you're, you, you, you have to stay because you wanna build a legacy or I wanna get the promotion or I wanna do, get, get married and have kids. When you move abroad, you're not missing out on anything, but you're gaining everything. So that's it for me today. Thank you so much for listening. Sorry, I'm a little long. Wendy, I actually had a whole lot more to say, but I was like, let me cut this short. But uh, I'm happy to answer any question that you have, but please like, you know, be encouraged today. Whatever you wanna do, whatever you put your mind to, you got this. You can do it. Okay?
Thank you, Faye. So I wanted y'all to hear from somebody else. Because there's so many, you know, I know you've heard my story. This is the first time I've actually heard Faye's story and it's amazing. So we have fifteen minutes. I want you to ask questions, you know, let us know if you wanna speak, throw it into the chat. Uh, this is your time. Go ahead. Go ahead, Lori.
Hi, first off, Faye, I've been watching your transition for a while now in the background. I wanna thank you so much for all the information that you have shared. Um, I also am married to a Kenyan, so. Thank you again for just sharing because I feel that this really helps for me, my mindset adjustment. Because like you, I lost my mom last year. And I actually traveled to Kenya. She, she had Alzheimer's, her, she was, before I, the day that I left, she asked me, even though she was forgetting everything else, she asked me, did I go on my trip? And it made me feel like that she really wants me to live my life, no matter what, you know? And I, I'm, I was dragging my feet about coming to Kenya. But now with all the things that's happening, I'm starting to move my feet quicker. And I was curious, um, if you provide any mentoring or one-to-one type of consultations in regards to business. I'm already in the expat groups and the WhatsApps and everything. But I really, I feel I need to sit down and like verbally strategize exactly how I want to make this move. Um, and I'm also coming in February. So if it's i- either over the phone, I just wanted to know if those are some things that you offer?
Yeah, I'm gonna throw a link in the chat. I'm so sorry to hear about your mother. I'm getting teary out over here because, you know, we know they want it the absolute best for us and, you know, the, the sad thing for me is they didn't actually get to see it. But you know, we have to live for them. You know, they love us. Um, and, and I know she's watching you to make sure you're happy and she's cheering you on, you know, from another realm. But um, but yes, I'm happy to help. Let me send you a link, um, so you can tap in with me and um, you can just schedule a call.
And we'll also send out a um, email with all of the speaker's informations, website, um, links to book appointments. So make sure you register because you will have everyone's information. So you can utilize your resources. Faye is, she has a ball of knowledge, y'all. So question, any more questions? Concerns? Comments on how much we pay for stuff?
You're welcome, Lori. Hi, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, great. Okay, so I'm in California. Um, I've always wanted to leave this America since I was eighteen years old. Hold on to your seatbelt. I'm seventy-three now and I still wanna go.
Okay.
I've never wanted to be here. At eighteen, I knew I wanna be here.
Hmm.
So of course, my question is, I'm seventy-three, but I'm in good health, you know, and all that stuff. Um, but what struck me was when you were talking about, you know, okay, so what if I only have, you know, twenty, twenty years? Well, I'm not really planning on twenty years, but would it?
Never know.
Well, no, you never know. You never know. But you know, what, what would it be like for, or do you have any suggestions for somebody who's my age? Um, my fa- finances are in order. I went out. I went out.
Well, Renee, the only thing I can say to you is life is short. Do it now. If you have your finances in place, like let's do it. You know, you can move to, I mean, I'm always about living in countries that are gonna be cheaper for me to live. So move to a country that is cheaper for you to live. And um, there, like even if you get older and you can't do whatever, you can afford a nurse, you know? If you're living in the US and you have social security, you can't really live well. You gotta try to like, you know, skimp and scrape to get by. But here you can have a maid, you can have a cook, you can have a nurse. Like, why wouldn't you do that? You know? Like for me, it's not even like a choice. Like it, it's not about age. Like nothing has anything to do with age. Like, you know, whatever age you decide, hey, I'm really gonna do it, just do it. I have clients who have come over from the US and they are around your age or older. They're, a lot of uh, people who have come have been retired. Because they know they can come over here and live a better life, you know? Because while you're in the States, I'm sure you have the cook, cling for yourself. If, you know, you need nursing, you have to do it for yourself or go to the doctor or hire an expensive nurse. But here you can have a nurse like living with you full-time for like less than two hundred dollars a month. So it's like, it's a better and easier life for you and it's a lifestyle I recommend at any age. Like, I don't think because, you know, you need to move because you're young or you're old. It doesn't matter. Like, you move because you feel like in your heart of hearts, it's time. So all I can say to you is, don't think too hard about it. Just go. Life is short. Do it now. You know, as, as we all get older, we can see, we start to see the future ahead and, you know, we all die. So it's like, you know, as you get older, you start to see, you know, your potential demise. And so why not, you know, why stick yourself in a country where you don't wanna be? Let's go. Let's do it. Hit me up. I'll help you out. But you gotta get out of there because if you're in your hardest parts, you wanna be somewhere else, go ahead and discover a life you love today.
What do, what is the, are you satisfied with the healthcare that you received there?
It's fine. It, well, the beauty of living here, I think, is uh, they have different levels. There's, you know, the lower level, people who work domestic jobs or, you know, um, informal employees. They have a certain level of care. Uh, but for us, you know, we're all like really rich, you know? So here we're rich, anyway, the US report, but here we're rich. So it's like, you know, you can have the best level of care possible. There are great doctors, there are great nurses, there are great, you know, staffs. And if you don't like what you're getting here, you pop over to another country and get healthcare there. You know, I've been to doctors in India, I've been to doctors in Thailand. As a reference, my full body check, I get it done in Thailand. They check everything from my, the top of my head to the soles of my feet for four hundred dollars. And it's luxury, it's high luxury. You know, they feed me lunch, they feed me breakfast, you know, they take care of me. I have a nice robe and it's like I'm in a luxury hotel and I love it. Like four hundred dollars. Like where can you get that from in the US, you know? So it's like, even if you don't like healthcare here, I went to a hospital in um, India. Man, and when I tell you this place was the most beautiful place, not just hospital, I mean, the most beautiful place I have ever been to. And they treat you like a celebrity because you're rich, you know? So they treat you like a celebrity, like they're escorting you, you have a personal concierge taking you from this place to that place. And it's just, you get all your services in one day and then you fly home. So healthcare here, it's, you know, it's a no-brainer. Like, you know, there are all kinds of services and that. Even if you're not satisfied with the healthcare here, here, there are places that are close by that you can have your healthcare done and it's still cheap.
Well, this is perfect timing for me because, you know, even at seventy-three, I don't know, maybe I'm a dreamer. But I'm actually, I'm actually looking around and kind of doing my own research on where I can go. I definitely wanna go black. I don't know, um, if it's Africa or I've been looking at curacao.
Mm-hmm.
But I can't do this anymore.
Now, listen.
I never did wanna do it and now I wanna do it even less.
If you don't have to get out.
Everything. Thank you.
No problem. Happy to help.
Information that we'll, we'll be receiving because I did register. So, thank you guys.
Awesome. Okay, any more questions?
While anyone else is waiting to do questions, I, I wanna add, um, for those that don't know me, I'm a single mom and I have a child with a disability. And like Faye said, there are no limits to what we can do. My son has a disability, he has special needs. I still live abroad. I live in Kenya, I live in Nairobi. And trying to fix so much. And one of the reasons why I do is because I looked at the hospitals here in East Africa. They have some of the best healthcare hospitals. When I got here, I got really sick. I ended up in the emergency room, admitted to the hospital. I'm personally, I ended up doing um, ultra, I ended up doing an EGD, uh, sorry, metal, uh, a scope. I ended up doing colonoscopies. I had CT scans. I had um, ultrasound. And I spent fifteen hundred, I spent a thousand fifteen hundred dollars. And I have the same insurance as Faye. It's a two hundred dollar deductible for the year. I had already met my deductible because I'm always doing something. Um, and so for fifteen hundred dollars or seven or less, I literally got all of that done. Total nonsense in America. The copay for that alone, it's like five hundred to a thousand dollars. Like, it's the copay. So, you know, I want you to be mindful that there is healthcare hospitals everywhere. It just depends on the level of it. Let's say you go to, um, you know, if you go to a place with a modernized city, you're going to have healthcare. And I promise you, it's probably gonna be cheaper than what you pay for a copay. So hope is there. And those social security dollars go a lot further. A lot further. Like Faye said, your nurse, your cook, your cleaner. It, you can live a marvelous life abroad. So don't let anything stop you from doing so. Um, anyone else have any more questions before Faye um, finishes up? This is your time. You should, now, you know, our time is valuable. So she's gonna charge you out. I'm pushing out now. That could be very real.
That's true, Charisma. It's free right now. So hit me up now. What you got? What you got? Because you know, when we get off this platform, like our time, like, you know, I'm working my business, I'm doing all these other things. And you want me to sit on the phone with you for an hour? You know, people go in circles. I'm like, we just talked about that. So.
Okay, Danielle, go ahead. What's?
Hi, Faye and Charisma. I just wanna say, thank you, Charisma, for sharing information. I'm part of the um, Black Expats of Kenya WhatsApp chat. Um, and I'm also a single mom. I'm actually here in South Africa uh, with my daughter. And we were in Nairobi yesterday, so we spent a few days there. And Faye, I feel like you're famous in the expat world. Um, I do, I followed a lot of your advice maybe about a year ago. And it just encouraged me to continue on with wanting to just travel the world, even with being a single mother. Of course, I didn't expect to be a single mother, but I told myself that I would not allow that to stop me from traveling. I've always wanted to come to Africa. So right now I'm in my second leg. So for about four days, I was in Nairobi. So I got to experience that. And it was very helpful to be part of the WhatsApp group, um, that, the Black Expats of um, Kenya to just interact with other people who have the same mindset. Because I also believe that in order to move abroad, you need a mindset to, to just step out into freedom. I feel like it's fear that keeps people back in the states from traveling. A lot of people will look at me and they're like, oh my gosh, you're traveling with a baby. She's so young. What are you guys gonna do when you get there? Are you gonna be safe? And I'm just like, I feel safer here than I would back home. And I'm from New York City. I'm from Queens. But it's just been a great experience having you, Faye, to just share your story um, about Kenya. And you also, Charisma, just um, I see you always stepping up in the group and you created also the um, the Moms of Kenya group. So that was just amazing. And to know that there's others like us out here is just very encouraging and empowering. So I want to say thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And what I'll say to you, Danielle, is you- Awesome, thank you so much, and what I'll say to you, Danielle, is you'll be a single parent no matter where you go, so you're, you're in the US, you're still a single parent. You're in South Africa, you're a single parent, you're in Kenya, like, I don't know why people make that distinction, like, I'm still in a place, and I'm still a single parent, so what else am I supposed to do it?
I've got way more help support here than in the United States, it's crazy.
Yeah, but I figure, like, you know, eh, you didn't plan it, but it was meant to be, you've got this beautiful little girl, so enjoy life together. Her passport, her passport is just gonna be so full, when she gets like five, she's like, oh, I've been everywhere, I love that for her. Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much, yes, you're right, seeing, I'm a single parent, I've been a single parent in seven different countries. With nannies in all of them, so, single parenthood is a lot easier abroad than in the States. So, thank you so, so much, Faye, and make sure y'all register, I'm gonna send out all her information with her website and how you can connect with her. All right, so, Ms. Ashley, yes, you are here. All right, so next I wanna introduce Ms. Ashley Harland. She will be talking about how to financially prepare ourselves during unprecedented times. Before I introduce you, I wanna tell you how I literally ran up on Ashley, because that's what I did. Then Instagram, on threads, they show you like little clips of things that people say. And I saw Ashley mention something, I can't say verbatim, but it was something about preparing ourselves for what's about to come financially. I then went on Instagram, typed in her name, stalked her page, and I was like, oh, I gotta get this queen here, because she is about to teach us something. So, all right, so here we have Ms. Ashley, so let me tell you about her. Um, she is a financial growth advisor dedicated to helping women of color, solo entrepreneurs take control of their finances and achieve their true financial freedom. With decades of experience in money management, she combines her early start in financial services at eighteen with a strong commitment to values-based income alignment. After an unexpected layoff from a Fortune five hundred job, Ashley transforms her career focused into empowering others towards financial independence. She created the Profit Paycheck Instances, guiding clients to deliver financial systems that drive wealth and align profits with meaningful life goals. Ashley's unique approach blends corporate discipline and entrepreneurial spirit, empowering her to design financially independent futures their own terms. And so, in other words, y'all pay attention to Ashley, because she's about to tell you what to do with your money. So, let me stop sharing, and I am going to let you take it.
Thank you, Charisma.
You are so welcome.
It's so weird to hear someone read a bio on you. It, it just feels so odd to hear someone like, talk about you. But hello, everyone, I'm so excited to be here with you all today. And really, I don't wanna be talking to myself, I'm not trying to lecture you, it is a town hall, so it is our opportunity to chit-chat about your finances, I wanna be able to answer whatever questions you all may have. And I'd like some interaction in the chat, so I'm gonna ask you all some questions as we go. But, like Charisma said, um, I'm Ashley Harland, I run a business called The Concierge CFO. And I primarily focus on working with women of color who are single, child-free solopreneurs, and I really help them to think through the intersectionality of their business finances and how those impact their personal finances and vice versa. So what I thought would be really helpful today, because I know a lot of you are looking at potentially leaving the US and moving abroad, or maybe you're there already. I understand that most times you're not running, um, you're not working a nine-to-five, so you may be running a business, or thinking about starting a business, so you can have that flexibility to move. So I wanna go through four things that I think you need to be thinking about when it comes to your finances. And if you're staying in these United States of America, as we know, with the administration, there's gonna be a lot of things changing for us, and I think it's gonna really impact those of us who are business owners. So these tips and these things I'm gonna talk through should also really help to prepare you now to be proactive, to be able to think about, how am I gonna be handling my finances when this new administration takes over? How can I make sure that I am doing things now to prepare myself, um, so I'm not caught off guard with whatever they decide to do? So if you are a note-taker like me, I'm gonna go through, um, four different key areas that I think we need to hone in on to prepare ourselves, to prepare our finances, so the first thing I'm gonna go through is building up our savings. Second thing is to think about whatever debt we may have. Third thing is going to be around, how do we invest outside of our business? So if you have a business now, how do you think about investing outside of your business to give you some more liquid funds? Especially if you're thinking about transitioning from the US. Somewhere else, we can start to build up that pot of money for you to be able to do that now. And then I'll wrap up with just a little bit about how to think about getting some funding. If you are running a business and you feel like, okay, I need to think about how can I get some capital, um, I will be talking about that. So, before I hop into anything, I'd just like to get a feel for who was on the call, kind of where you are, so if you can let me know in the chat, do you live abroad, or are you living in the US? And are you working a nine-to-five, or are you a business owner? So, let me know in the chat, so I know who is on the call. Type it for me. I'll give y'all a couple of seconds. Okay, abroad business owner, business owner.
I think we have a mix of both, people that work online in the States, and then people that live abroad, um, that are business owners, but also some people that live abroad that still work, like, online.
Former teacher, new entrepreneur of US-based business, living abroad, okay, that's helpful to know. Okay, so let's start off, um, we'll talk about savings. Savings is important, but I don't wanna come at you from the traditional financial standpoint where I'm talking to you about you need three to six months of savings, et cetera, because I feel like we've heard that a lot. Where I want to, to spend some time when we talk about savings, especially if you're living in the US, and you're wanting to move abroad, or you're living abroad and you're trying to figure out how can you go different places, we need to make sure we have liquid funds to be able to do that. And I don't think we often think about, how much does it cost to run your life? How much does it cost for you to live and live well? So, one of the threads that I did that I think Charisma may have seen is that I really talked about how important it is for us as black women to start taking care of ourselves and putting ourselves first. And in my experience, uh, ninety-five percent of my clients are black women. And we are always kind of going back and forth in these conversations around where they need to focus their finances. And we tend to be more servant-type people, we're thinking about our families, we're thinking about, if we're running a business, we're thinking about our team, we're thinking about everyone else, but not really always thinking about what would allow me to live well. Not just how am I gonna pay my bills, but in addition to being able to pay my bills, what else do I need to make sure that I am factoring in to my ability to live well? Travel, um, hanging out with your friends, um, investing in your hobbies, maybe you wanna learn how to play tennis, pickleball, golf, um, take swim lessons, whatever the case may be. How are you factoring in, how much does it cost for you to live and to live well? So that's the first thing that I want you to do, is to think about what that number is. And if you were translating that to somewhere outside of the US, how much would it take you to live well wherever you're deciding to go, and really mapping that out, so you can get an idea of what that number is. And you can anchor your savings around understanding that I need to save X amount of money, so I can spend five thousand dollars a month, four thousand dollars a month, three thousand dollars a month, whatever that number is, the more clear you are on what it's gonna cost you to live, the easier it'll be for you to figure out how much savings you need to have. On the flip side of that, I have clients go through this in what I call their CEO compensation plan. Because if you're running a business, and your business is your primary source of income, we can use whatever that savings goal you have to factor in how much profit does the business need to be able to generate? So that's where that intersectionality piece comes in, is thinking about, okay, how do I need to live over here personally? And what does the business need to be doing from a financial standpoint? That will allow me to pay myself what I need to pay myself to live well. In addition to the business, though, we need to make sure that we have liquid funds over there in case something happens. With the new administration and things coming in place, I have no idea, because we have concepts of a plan of what our tax situation is gonna be, um, what other things that they may be putting in place, if you run a product-based, product-based business, it may cost you more to produce that product. So we need to make sure that we have liquid funds available to us for whatever may come down the pipeline. And so, being clear on how much does it cost you to run your business, so you can start to have money set aside in an emergency fund or a cash reserve fund on the business side as well, to make sure that you're in good shape. So, my advice, my tip here that I want you all to take away when it comes to thinking about your savings, is how do you build the habit of saving? Not anchoring yourself totally in, I gotta have three to six months, or I gotta have X amount of money, it's just building up the habit of saving. So, how do you do that? I have a client, um, her name is Erica, and Erica is she's one of those people who just has a lot going on all the time, and she would get ready for our meetings. I use CookUp as a system, as a project management system. And I would, I always see her, like, right before our meetings go in, she's trying to get all of her tasks done. Um, so I'm getting all of these notifications for things that she was supposed to be doing that she had not done. Because she tends to be someone who avoids dealing with her money, she procrastinates, she gets overwhelmed. And so, we put in this timeframe in our meeting called Get It Done. And I'm like, okay, Erica, all of these things that we need to get done, do we need to move money into savings, do we need to invoice people? Whatever the things we need to do, we're gonna get it done within these first ten to fifteen minutes. And that's what we did, we've been working together for like, three years at this point in time. And I have noticed doing that with her every single month has helped her to build the habit of doing things that will help her get one percent closer to her financial goals. So when it comes to saving, it is us going in every single month on our call together and making sure that she's moving the amount of money over that she needs to move over into her personal savings account. It is her moving the amount of money that she needs to move over into her business savings account. And it is getting into the habit, in building the habit of moving the money versus focusing on how much she's moving. And over time, we've been able to build up a very healthy savings account and a very healthy business cash reserve account, simply by just getting into the habit of moving the money. And so, what I want your takeaway from the savings section to be is to not get overwhelmed with, oh my gosh, I wanna, I wanna move from the US to Kenya, I wanna move from the US to um, Thailand, wherever it is that you may wanna move, or I wanna stay in the US and, you know, just change my situation. It's gonna cost me so much money to do that, and I gotta think about the business, like, is, is I'm saying this, I feel overwhelmed thinking about all of those things that we would have to do and how much money it would cost. So it's dialing things back and saying, okay, I have this goal, let me figure out how much it's gonna cost me to live wherever I decide to live. And then let me focus on doing one thing, moving some money into savings every single month, every single week, whatever your cadence is, to prepare me to be able to do that thing. So that's the first thing that I want to cover. The second thing that we need to think through is debt. I think debt gets a bad rep. Um, in the black community, and in my experience, we tend to fear debt a lot. And then based off of our religious background, that can also color how we think about debt. Um, if you think about the scripture, you know, to be the lender and not the borrower, we just have this relationship with debt that causes a lot of shame and anxiety. Um, in my experience, working with primarily black clients. And although I understand that we don't wanna carry high-interest debt, it can hurt us if we're trying to run a business, because we need to understand how to leverage debt in the business sometimes to grow. And when we do not have a healthy relationship with debt, and we avoid it, it can negatively impact our ability to get funding on the business side. So I know we've got some people on the call who are business owners. And I just recently ran into this, so I wanted to share this with you all, um, with a client that I have, she lives in Delaware. And we needed some business funding for her to be able to invest into the business for some growth opportunities she was looking at, and we could not get funding. We couldn't get a PayPal loan, we couldn't get a Stripe loan, we couldn't get a line of credit. Nobody would lend to her, and the reason why they would not lend to her is because she did not have great credit on the personal side. So in the US, if you are a service-based business, most times, because that's who I work with, the service-based businesses, we don't have assets for them to use as collateral. Meaning, we don't have a building, we don't have inventory, like, if you were running in, um, a boutique, like, you got inventory, you have clothes, you may have shoes, you may have purses, like, you have, they consider those things assets, meaning that if you cannot pay them, you can go sell some dresses, you can go sell some shoes. You don't have that opportunity when you run a service-based business. So what they do to figure out if you are worth lending to, is that they will like, look at your personal credit. And if your personal credit is not good, it does not really matter as much sometimes how good your business is looking from a financial standpoint. If they don't feel like you're credit-worthy, then they're not going to lend you any money. And so it comes back to the point that I was saying at the top of the, the time that we had together, is that the business and your personal life have an intersectionality point. They have a point in which one impacts the other, and we need to make sure that we're in a good spot when it comes to our um, debt on the personal side, so it doesn't negatively impact us on the business side. Now, if you're abroad, I'm not quite sure, um, how they look at debt, if they still look at debt from the US standpoint, so Charisma, I don't know if you, if you're on here, if you could, if you could chime in a little, yeah.
For most of us, our money investment abroad is going to come from the US. They have loans abroad, but the loans abroad have such a high interest rate that it's really not worth it. They have loans abroad, but the loans abroad have such a high interest rate that it's really not worth it. So we still have to make sure our, our stuff is together in the US. And we bring that money and that's what we invest with. You can invest with this money, but it's really not the best way to go about doing it in the country.
Okay, that's helpful to know. So from a US standpoint, we still wanna make sure they're gonna use your personal credit to use that as collateral for the business credit. I'm gonna stop in this little debt section because I know that I may be using some terms and going through some things that may not be as familiar with you. And so I would love to just get some feedback from you all around any questions you may have around debt from either the personal or the business side and how they play off of each other, if you have any questions.
I think that one thing that a lot of people don't realize is that there is good debt as well as bad debt. And your good debt can make you money. And I think in our community, a lot of people are afraid of debt. Not realizing the multimillionaires out here have millions of dollars in debt. And that's how, and they leverage that money and that's how they make more money. So if you can kinda explain that harder.
Yeah, so I don't always think about it as good debt or bad debt. I think about it more so, what is the purpose of this debt? And is this debt gonna give me a return on my investment? So we were using debt as the framework. I would say debt that is high interest, that you are utilizing for a short-term gain. So you swipe your credit card, your personal credit card for one dress that you're gonna wear one time. That's not a good return on investment for you to take on the debt, plus the interest that you're gonna accrue over time. So I would consider that if we were thinking about it from good debt, bad debt, that, that's not good debt, that's bad debt. But if you are a business owner and you need to make an investment into a business coach, or maybe you need to run Facebook ads because you need to get in front of a new audience and you wanna take on a business credit card and charge the ads to that credit card. But you know that the money that that ad is gonna make you is gonna be maybe three, four, or five times worth the initial investment because you're gonna get clients, maybe they're gonna pay you, you know, consistent recurring monthly income. Or maybe you sell something that's a little more high-ticket and they're gonna pay you for that. And you can work it out to say, okay, I'm putting this money on a credit card, but it's gonna make me more money in the future. That's when I would consider that good debt. Because you're using that debt, you're using someone else's money to leverage that right now to help you to make more money in the future. And so when we think about the, the millionaires and the business owners that have a lot of debt, they're thinking through, and this is what I'm doing with clients, when they say, okay, I wanna get a loan, I need to get a lot of credit, I need to do this. My question is, why are we getting the money? What do you plan to do with the money? And how do we ensure that whatever debt we take on is gonna pay off in the future? Does that always happen? No, sometimes you're gonna take some Ls when you take on debt. It's just a part of it. It's the risk factor of running a business. Not every investment is gonna pan out how we want it to pan out. But if we can leverage debt now to be able to grow our businesses, then I say, think through the plan to do that. I've done that at a few times. I've invested in business coaches. I've invested in masterminds. I've invested in marketing. I've invested money from utilizing a credit card or utilizing a line of credit. I've invested that money. And I've been able to make that money back because it helped me to either become more knowledgeable, give me more, um, visibility or bring in clients. And so when we think about debt, we have to think about it from that standpoint. But the flip side of it is having a plan to pay it off, which is why I think we really miss the mark a lot of times. It's like, we'll get the debt, but we don't really have a plan in place to pay it off and pay it off before it starts to snowball into a situation where our minimum payment is so high. Then we feel like we don't have any money and all we're doing is paying the debt. So if you're gonna take the debt on, think about why you need it, what you're gonna use it for. But then also, how are you gonna pay it back? And I apply the same principles to personal debt as business debt with clients. We look at two options. Either we're gonna pay the debt back using the debt snowball method, or we're gonna pay the debt back using the avalanche method. And I'll toggle between the two. So if you're not familiar with those two ways of paying debt back, um, debt snowball basically is if you have like multiple types of debt, multiple types of credit card loans, et cetera, you pick the one with the lowest balance and you focus on paying that one off first, and you just pay the minimum on everything else. And then once you pay off, you know, debt number one, then you move to debt number two. Take the previous payment that you were making for debt number two, add that to debt number one, and you just kinda keep going until you get all of your debt paid off. Or you can do the avalanche method, which is looking at your highest interest rate, um, debt option. So if you have a credit card, because those tend to be the highest, you got a credit card that has an interest rate of twenty-seven percent, but you have a loan that has an interest rate of ten percent, you're gonna focus on that high-interest credit card first because that is costing you a whole lot more money than that ten percent loan. You're gonna focus on paying that off first, and then once you pay that off, then you go to the next one. So that's really, um, the way in which we would think about debt. Any other questions around debt? Okay. So we talked about savings, we talked about debt. And now I wanna shift gears and talk about investing money outside of your business. So, um, let me all, let me know, are we familiar with different investing types of, um, accounts? Roth IRAs, 401Ks, um, traditional IRAs, things like that? Let me know in the chat, yes. Renee, I see your question. I'm a, I'll hold it to the end and I'll, we can talk through it if you wanna hop on and we can flesh it out. Okay, so T said, yes, but can you do an overview? Yeah, okay. So if you got pen and paper, a note taker, I want you guys to write these four investment accounts down. And then I'm gonna talk through them. And in this section in particular, if you have questions, drop them in the chat and let me know. Because I wanna, I really wanna spend the majority of our time here because I think it's the most impactful thing that you all can take away from today. Um, so if you have any additional questions around it, just let me know. So I did a thread on this and got a lot of feedback. I'm actually gonna dive deeper into this particular topic on my podcast. I'm dropping a new podcast, y'all. I'm so excited about it. It's coming out next week. So, um, when Charisma sends out the information, I'll make sure to give her the link to it. So if you want to hear a more in-depth breakdown of these, you can. But these are four accounts that I think every single black woman needs to have. I don't care where you at, I don't care if you run a business, you don't run a business, you need to have these four accounts. The first one is a taxable account and it is called an individual brokerage account. So I call this a taxable account because when you pull money out of it, then you get taxed. But the thing that I love about that brokerage account is that it's different than your retirement account. You can touch the money when you need to touch it. So it gives you flexibility to build wealth within an investment account that you can get a hold to before you're age fifty-nine and a half. A lot of the accounts that we often talk about, you can't touch it until you become retirement age. So if your goal is to build up some wealth and you wanna have some flexibility to be able to use that money. So for me, I wanna become work optional when I'm fifty-seven. So I'm spending a lot of my time putting money into a brokerage account because I know I'm not gonna be able to touch my, um, money in my 401K and IRAs and all of that until I'm fifty-nine and a half. I'm trying to retire a couple of years before I get to that age. So I need to have a bucket of money to touch without having to pay a ton of money in taxes. So for me, that is utilizing a taxable account, which is the individual brokerage account. I think for those of you all who are on this call, who want to move abroad, this is also a great account for you. Depending upon, um, when you're looking to tap into it, I wholeheartedly believe it is a long-term investing account. But what it does allow you to do is put money in an account so your money can make money for you. You get to get the advantage of being a US citizen and having that money make money for you and pay whatever our tax rates are here. But use that money for yourself possibly in another country and on another continent. So the taxable account, the brokerage account, is the most flexible account that you're gonna have that is gonna allow you to take advantage of what I call the eighth wonder of the world, which is compound interest. And we all want a little piece of the compound interest. We are either in the US or we are US citizens and we live in a capitalistic society. So I think as black women, we should be the ones that are taking the most advantage of this capitalistic society that we have to live in. And the way that the wealthy make money is not by living off of the money that they earn from the work that they do. This is what I learned in my eighteen-plus years working in finances. I had clients who never used their salary, they just lived off of their investments. How do you live off of your investments? You need to get a brokerage account because the brokerage account allows you to invest and live off of those investments if you decide to get investments that pay out dividends and things like that, that will allow you to do that. Or you can just pull the money out, um, and use it, but they, it is taxable. So that's the first account. The second one is probably one that you all have heard about, and that's a Roth IRA. And a Roth IRA gets a lot of, um, commentary around it because it's tax-free money. So tax-free money means that your money is gonna go in after you pay your taxes. So this money just transfers straight from your checking account or your savings account you put in in the Roth IRA. That money is gonna grow tax-free. And then when you get ready to use it, you get to pull the money out tax-free. So it's a beautiful account to be able to use in retirement because you can't touch it and get that tax-free benefit until you're fifty-nine and a half. So that's the caveat. It's like you gotta wait until your retirement age for you to touch the money without having a ten percent penalty and without having to pay taxes on the money that you pull out. The third type of account, there's a lot of different ones that fit into this category. Um, so think about your 401Ks if you are at a nine to five. Um, for those of us who are business owners, we can get what's called a solo 401K. We can get what's called a SEP IRA. But all of those accounts are what they call tax-deferred accounts, which means that we are deferring the taxes that we're paying on that money into the future when we hit retirement. So when you pull the money out of these accounts after you're fifty-nine and a half, you will pay taxes at that point in time. The beautiful thing about tax-deferred accounts, though, in the US is that we reduce our taxes today by putting money into those accounts. So whenever you file your taxes, that's why they ask, like, do you contribute to a 401K? Do you contribute to a traditional IRA? They're trying to figure out if you're doing that because if you do that, you can reduce your tax liability this year by contributing to those accounts. They give you that benefit. And then the last account, I call it your stability fund, and that's your high-yield savings account. So this is where I like to put emergency fund money, um, from a personal standpoint and a business standpoint. Um, because it typically is gonna pay a higher interest than like your regular savings account. And due to the current interest rate situation we got going over, got going on over here in the US, the high-yield savings accounts are paying pretty good. Um, you can get some of them, you know, between three and four percent right now. I don't think that's gonna last forever. I think that's gonna be one of the things that we're gonna start to see trickle down as the new administration comes in. I think eventually savings rates will go back to what they were a few years ago, around maybe one percent, one to two percent, if that. So I definitely feel that from a, a safety, stability standpoint, you should have your money right now in a high-yield savings account to take advantage of the interest rates that we have while we have them. Okay, so those are the four accounts. I'm gonna pause. I'm gonna see, what questions do you have around these accounts? While I grab a swig of water.
So we're supposed to have each of these?
Yeah, I like having all four. Don't let it overwhelm you, because you can start out having a little bit in each one. But I like having all four because of the diversity of your taxes. So when we get ready, when we think about growing wealth, the, one of the biggest pieces to growing that wealth for us in the US is having to pay all these damn taxes. So what you wanna do is have money in different types of tax accounts. So you get to choose and have a lot more control around how much tax you pay. If you have all of your money in one type of account, now you don't have any diversity of a tax situation. If you're growing wealth in all four of them, and you may be growing the wealth at a different rate in all four, but if you have all four, then you can choose how you wanna pull that money out and see how that would impact your tax situation. Make sense? Okay, T, can you suggest any high-yield savings accounts? I've heard about them, but not invested yet. So one of my favorite accounts is, um, Ally has a really good high-yield savings account. I use them, and I love Ally because they have what's called buckets. So you can have all of your money essentially in one high-yield savings account, but you can earmark different things within there for your money to go. So I like Ally. Um, I think it's Marcus by Goldman Sachs, they typically have a pretty high, high-yield savings account as well. So I've got some clients that use them. But Ally is my favorite for ease of use and for that bucket situation. And then you asked, do most banks, credit unions offer all four accounts? Do you recommend online or physical-based bank accounts? Oh, that's a great question, T. Okay. So here's my thought process around bank accounts. I like to tell my clients, we need to have one physical location bank. And I prefer like a credit union or a community bank on the business side because depending upon the business that you have and you need to think about funding, it's easier a lot of times to get funding, get a lot of credit, get a loan, et cetera, through smaller banks or credit unions where you have relationships. So if you've got your savings account there or your checking account there, you can build relationships with your banker. I used to be a banker, so I, I understand the power of relationships with your banker. You are going to put yourself in a more advantageous situation to get lending from those banks. Then I love having an online bank. So I mentioned Ally. And then on the business side, my clients and I, we all use Relay Bank because those banks, the online banks, allow you a lot of times to get higher interest rates because they don't have brick-and-mortar locations that they have to pay overhead for. So they can give you a lot better user experience. They can pour money back into apps, pour money back into technology. And so they tend to have like more robust and user-friendly platforms on the online side. So I always recommend having a physical location bank and an online bank just so you can have diversity in your banking situation as well. And then when you ask about all four accounts, some of them do, but when I think about the brokerage account or the 401Ks or your Roth IRAs, I like using companies like Fidelity. Fidelity is my favorite account to use for those types of accounts. You've got like E-Trade, the ones that you see the commercials for, those are typically like the big box places where you can do investing. But I love Fidelity because they allow you to invest in fractional shares. And so I can talk about that in a little bit more detail if you want me to. Renee, what's your question?
All right. Thank you, Ashley, so much. Okay, so because I'm retired and because of that age, I'm now, as you know, required to take out a certain percentage of my annuities and all that stuff. And I've been thinking about, you know, what do I want to do with, you know, the money that I'm going to receive from those annuities, like, you know, to invest them? I don't know. You know how we are. Well, I'll give my grandson some. I'll give my mom, you know. But I'm thinking I might be, it may be better if I, I don't know, maybe reinvest it or put it in something that has a high yield and then distribute it to them, you know, like that, you know, whenever I, you know, transition.
So you are, you're taking a required minimum distributions right now?
Yeah, right.
Okay, so you have a few options. You could use a brokerage account because they don't care about you having earned income. The other ones that we discussed, you have to have earned income to put the money back in there. And at your stage of life, I wouldn't recommend you do that. But you could get a brokerage account and be very conservative with that money to just allow it to kind of consistently grow but not take on the risk of, you know, interest rates that are gonna go up and down in the market. You could also put money into high-yield savings accounts. That's an option for you. And then depending upon, like, if you've got grandchildren, ages of those grandchildren, they have different types of accounts specifically for kids too. So if you wanted to earmark funds for them, you can invest directly on their behalf. And then you, I would highly suggest that you have a will. And in the will, you spell out who gets what money. And you have the ability to say they can't touch the money until they're eighteen, twenty-five, or whatever. You can specify when you want them to have access to that money.
I have a trust.
Do you have a trust?
Yeah.
So if you have a trust, you could open up those different types of accounts and have the trust own those accounts. And then in your trust documents, you could have, you can lay out how you want the funds to be paid out based off of the trust document.
Oh, okay. I certainly know that.
Have you funded your trust yet, Renee?
No. We didn't fund my trust. What does that mean?
So you have to put like money or accounts or assets inside of the trust for it to be funded?
Oh, I do have assets that are in there. And, and, but I want to distribute in terms of money is in there. But are you saying that I should do something different than that?
No, what I'm saying is just making sure that if you want to open up accounts for certain things, since you already have the trust established, just make sure that the, that the trust is the owner of those accounts. And then in your trust documents, making sure that you specify how you want those accounts to be paid out inside of the trust.
Yeah, I, I did. Okay, so if I did what you're saying right now, does that mean that I have already done what you're saying I should do? If I already put, you know, fifty percent going over here to this person, twenty-five percent over here and twenty-five percent over there, have I done what you are talking about?
Yes. The next step would be if you have additional funds, that you're still trying to figure out what you may want to do, then you could look at, you know, do I wanna look at the different types of accounts that I mentioned? And if you've got grandkids and stuff like that, you and I can always talk offline about this. I can tell you about some other accounts that you may want to think about. But for you, it's more like paperwork, making sure that the trust is the owner, making sure that you put in there, like, this account goes to this person. So we could always talk about that.
Now, I do have a consulting. I do pitch folks in the intensive consulting. And so that is additional funds that I would take outside of my pension and all that stuff. So, I mean, the same thing would go for that as what you've been saying about, you know, if you're working. I'm really working.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, okay, T, I have credit cards with my credit unions, with Chase and Capital One. T, for credit cards, I like Chase. Capital One has a good one. Are these personal or are these business accounts? Let me know. Personal, okay. I would leave what you have there on the personal side. I have found that when it comes to credit cards, you want to get credit cards specifically that are gonna give you some kind of benefit for spending the money. So I have a Chase card. I have a ton of clients who use American Express. So I would look at, if you need another credit card, then I would suggest looking at like an Amex or something similar that's gonna give you some travel benefits, it's gonna give you some cash back for food, things like that. If we're gonna be swiping these cards, we should be getting points that are gonna help us. For personally, so personal and business, my favorite companies are Chase, Amex, Capital One for credit cards specifically. And Citi, Citi can have some pretty good cards as well. But that's specifically credit card. If we're talking business and we're talking about you need a line of credit or you need a loan, then I would look first at your local community banks or your local credit unions. I'm right outside of Nashville, and so I'm not sure where you're located. But in Nashville, it's actually a pretty big hub for entrepreneurs. So we've got a few community banks that only work with business owners. And so it's very advantageous for us to go through them because they want our dollars and they tend to give us a lot better rates on loans and lines of credit versus me going to Chase or Bank of America or Wells Fargo. So on the loan side or loan of, or line of credit side for personal or business, I would look at your smaller banks and credit unions. I think we're in the Q and A section right now, so do y'all have any other questions on anything else that we covered?
Can you shed, I know you have something coming up and I'm going to send the link out to everyone, but if you can give a quick overview of what it is.
Oh, yeah, okay. I kind of switched some things up with our scheduling for the end of the year. But what we're gonna do is for Black Friday, and actually, first of all, I didn't tell you this, but I created a code for you all as well. What I'm gonna do for Black Friday is launch our Get It Done Challenge, which is a fifty-two-week challenge that will help you to get one percent better when it comes to your finances. And so what I have done is taken a lot of the things that my clients tell me that overwhelms them, they avoid doing, that they don't quite understand what to do. I have taken those things and turned them into tasks that will take you less than ten minutes to do. And you get it every single week. And you get a tracker so you can keep up with this, so you can hit bonus points. And you can collect points over time that will unlock this money vault for you so you can get access to me. You could get one-on-one sessions with me. You could get free webinars with me. You could get templates. We got all these things in the money vault that you can unlock by just doing these very simple tasks that will come out every single week. So that is what we are gonna be doing for Black Friday that's coming up. And then I created a code for anyone who attends the summit here. If you want to be a part of it, then you will get a discount code to the challenge as well. And so I'm going to be hosting a webinar for anyone who's on the challenge. I'm gonna be hosting a webinar for anyone who is in that community at the end of, towards the end of December. So you have to be in the challenge to get access to the webinar, but it'll be a live webinar. And it is going to go over in a little bit more detail how to prepare the business for 2025. And so I'm gonna do that for the challenge community, and I'm gonna give you all a twenty percent off discount if you want to join the challenge and be a part of that with us.
That sounds great. Do we have any more questions before she goes? You have been a wealth of knowledge. I need to, I'll be talking to you later.
I hope it was helpful. I know with finances, sometimes it's like, I try not to overwhelm with information, but I do want to kind of make sure that whatever questions you all have, if I can answer it here, I can. And if not, you know, we can always have a conversation offline.
Yes, and send out your information. Definitely send me the code and any other information that you want everyone to have so they'll, they can reach out.
Yes, and I would love, love, love for you all to listen to the podcast that's coming out next week. I'm so excited about dropping it. It's called From Corporate Paycheck to Business Profits. And it's gonna talk all about really how to prepare your business to build your personal wealth. But within that, we're gonna have two special kind of recurring series that I'm gonna be doing around the state of Black women, money, and power. Where I'm gonna go into some themes specifically for us as Black women and what I'm seeing out in the, the atmosphere. And then the second one I'm doing, which I'm so excited about as well, is a mini-series around the state of Black women, money, and dating. Because my primary audience is single, child-free women. And dating in these, these streets is a little rough. But I want to share things from my own experience and from my clients' experiences and conversations that we need to be having when we decide to get into these relationships with people because as business owners specifically, I feel like it really can impact your ability to grow and thrive in your, in your business if you have the right partner. And when you don't have the right partner, they can stunt your growth and mess up your money. And so we're gonna be having some specific conversations around that. So the podcast is called From Corporate Paycheck to Business Profits, and it launches next Thursday. So you'll see it pop up on Apple Podcasts and Spotify next Thursday.
Make sure you send me the link to that as well.
I will.
Okay, any last minute questions, you all? Concerns? Anything you just want to say and throw out into the atmosphere?
Please.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Ms. Ashley. This has been absolutely amazing and very helpful. I learned some things and I took my notes, so I hope everybody else did too.
I have a ton of clients who use American Express. So I would look at, if you need another credit card, then I would suggest looking at like an Amex or something similar that's gonna give you some travel benefits, it's gonna give you some cash back for food, things like that. If we're gonna be swiping these cards, we should be getting points that are gonna help us. For personally, so personal and business, my favorite companies are Chase, Amex, Capital One for credit cards specifically. And Citi, Citi can have some pretty good cards as well. But that's specifically credit card. If we're talking business and we're talking about you need a line of credit or you need a loan, then I would look first at your local community banks or your local credit unions. I'm right outside of Nashville, and so I'm not sure where you're located. But in Nashville, it's actually a pretty big hub for entrepreneurs. So we've got a few community banks that only work with business owners. And so it's very advantageous for us to go through them because they want our dollars and they tend to give us a lot better rates on loans and lines of credit versus me going to Chase or Bank of America or Wells Fargo. So on the loan side or loan of, or line of credit side for personal or business, I would look at your smaller banks and credit unions. I think we're in the Q and A section right now, so do y'all?
I think we're in the Q and A section right now. So do y'all have any other questions on anything else that we covered?
Can you shed, I know you have something coming up and I'm going to send the link out to everyone. But if you can give a quick overview of what it is.
Oh, yeah, okay. I kind of switched some things up with our scheduling for the end of the year, but what we're gonna do is for Black Friday, and actually Charisma didn't tell you this, but I created a code for you all as well. What I'm gonna do for Black Friday is launch our Get It Done Challenge, which is a fifty-two week challenge that will help you to get one percent better when it comes to your finances. And so what I have done is taken a lot of the things that my clients tell me that overwhelms them, they avoid doing, that they don't quite understand what to do. I have taken those things and turned them into tasks that will take you less than ten minutes to do. And you get it every single week. And you get a tracker so you can keep up with this, so you can hit bonus points. And you can collect points over time that will unlock this money vault for you so you can get access to me. You could get one-on-one sessions with me. You could get free webinars with me. You could get templates. We got all these things in the money vault that you can unlock by just doing these very simple tasks that will come out every single week. So that is what we are gonna be doing for Black Friday that's coming up. And then I created a code for anyone who attends the summit here. If you want to be a part of it, then you will get a discount code to the challenge as well. And so I'm going to be hosting a webinar for anyone who's on the challenge. I'm gonna be hosting a webinar for anyone who is in that community at the end of, towards the end of December. So you have to be in the challenge to get access to the webinar, but it'll be a live webinar. And it is going to go over in a little bit more detail how to prepare the business for twenty twenty-five. And so I'm gonna do that for the challenge community and I'm gonna give you all a twenty percent off discount. If you want to join the challenge and be a part of that with us.
That sounds great. Do we have any more questions before she goes? You have been a wealth of knowledge. I need to, I'll be talking to you later.
I hope it was helpful. I know with finances, sometimes it's like, I try not to overwhelm with information, but I do wanna kind of make sure that whatever questions you all have, if I can answer it here, I can. And if not, you know, we can always have a conversation offline.
Yes. And I'll send out your information. Definitely send me the code. And any other information that you want everyone to have, so they'll, they can reach out.
Yes, and I would love, love, love for you all to listen to the podcast that's coming out next week. I'm so excited about dropping it. It's called From Corporate Paycheck to Business Profits. And it's gonna talk all about really how to prepare your business to build your personal wealth. But within that, we're gonna have two special kind of recurring series that I'm gonna be doing around the state of black women, money and power. Where I'm gonna go into some themes specifically for us as black women and what I'm seeing out in the, the atmosphere. And then the second one I'm doing, which I'm so excited about as well, is a mini-series around the state of black women, money and dating. Because my primary audience is single, child-free women. And dating in these, these streets is a little rough. But I wanna share things from my own experience and from my clients' experiences and conversations that we need to be having when we decide to get into these relationships with people. Because as business owners specifically, I feel like it really can impact your ability to grow and thrive in your, in your business if you have the right partner. And when you don't have the right partner, they can stunt your growth and mess up your money. And so we're gonna be having some specific conversations around that. So the podcast is called From Corporate Paycheck to Business Profits and it launches next Thursday. So you'll see it pop up on Apple Podcasts and Spotify next Thursday.
Make sure you send me the link to that as well.
I will.
Okay, any last many questions, you all? Concerns? Anything you just wanna say and throw out into the atmosphere?
Please.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Ashen. This has been absolutely amazing and very helpful. I learned some things and I took my notes. So I hope everybody else did too. So I'll definitely get the information out to everyone. Make sure you all are registered. I am going to introduce our next person. So to conclude our meeting, I really wanted to talk about uniting our community, uniting for a stronger community. And I specifically chose someone that I know that this is what they do. This is what he stands for. I've seen it in action in the community, myself, myself, my daughter, we have volunteered with him and he has just done some amazing things. So I'm gonna put you this name, your name will be here. So Noble Jaleel.
Noble Jaleel Ettemis L.
Exactly. So I'm gonna tell you about him. He's a seasoned educator and retired Army veteran. He's a fierce advocate for empowerment and resilience within the black community. Mr. Smoot inspires students in engineering and technology pathways, instilling discipline, passion and excellence. He is the founder of Helvin Hands LLC, a nonprofit committed to uplifting those in need across Georgia and this great nation and is celebrated as Support Staff of the Year. Currently pursuing his doctorates, he combines his expertise in social science with a commitment to breaking down barriers in underserved, underserved communities. Mr. Smoot brings a unique perspective rooted in authenticity, strength and a relentless drive to help others succeed. So I am going to let you take it over.
Charisma, sorry, it's my fault. Before he does, I wanted to tell you, we could actually see the notes. We could see the screen, but we could actually see the whole screen. So that was my bad. I wanted to.
I'm working on it. Maybe next time I'll do better.
So, okay, I need him to open his camera so that I can spotlight you.
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me well?
Yes.
Good, good. So the way I did this is more of a speech per se. At the end, if you have any questions, feel free, anything you wanna add, I truly appreciate it. I'm not gonna be before you long. I'm not a preacher or anything like that. Also, you may hear me say the word Moore or Moorish. I do this because I do not like to use the word black. So I just want y'all to understand that because that is who we truly are. We are Moores and Moorish. Are we ready? Ms. Charisma, are we ready?
We're ready.
All right. Good afternoon or evening, family, depending on where you are in the world. Today I sit before you, not just as a man with words to share, but as a servant of our collective hope. A hope born from struggle, resilience and an unshakable belief in the beauty of our people. I sit before you as a Moor, a man who knows what it means to carry the weight of history and dreams for a better tomorrow. And I know you can carry it too. We are here because we are tired of being told our worth is conditional, that our success must be an exception and that our unity is a threat. We are here because we reject those lies. We are here because we know the truth. Our worth is infinite. Our success is inevitable and our unity is the foundation of our power. The methodology of peace. Let me ask you this. What would our communities look like if peace was our priority? If we choose love over judgment, forgiveness over resentment and healing over harm? Peace is not our weakness, it is our strength. It takes strength to look at a brother or sister who has wronged you and say, I see your pain and I choose to rise above it. It takes strength to break cycles of division, to refuse the whispers of hate that have been sown into our communities for generations. But we are strong, stronger than we know. Let us be architects of peace, building homes where love is the foundation, where every Moor child knows they are safe, valued and free to dream without limits. We must remember that peace begins within. But today I ask you to reclaim it. Look in the mirror and say, I am enough, because you are, we are. And we know that we can begin to see it in each other. The pathway to financial empowerment. Family, let us talk about wealth. Not just money, but the kind of wealth that transforms generations. The kind of wealth that turns neighborhoods into thriving communities. The kind of wealth that ensures our children never have to choose between their dream and their survival. For too long, we have been the laborer, but not the owner, the consumer, but not the creator. That ends today. We must support one another's businesses, not out of obligation, but out of pride. When you spend a dollar with a Moorish entrepreneur, you are planting a seed. And when you water those seeds together, we can grow forests of opportunity that no storm can destroy. But wealth is more than dollars and cents. It is knowledge. It is discipline. It is vision. We must teach our children how to save, how to invest and how to build. We must break the chains of debt and dependency and create a culture of abundance and ownership. Imagine this, our streets are lined with Moor-owned businesses. Our schools are funded by our success, our community thriving because we choose to build them together. That future is not a dream, it is a promise, a promise we make to ourselves and to each other. The spirit of uplifting one another. Let me tell you something that I know to be true. We are all connected. Your success is my success. Your pain is my pain. And when one of us rises, we all rise. We cannot afford to see each other as competition. We are family. A family means we lift as we climb. You see someone struggling? Don't look away. Step in. Offer a hand, a word, a resource. When you see someone succeeding, don't envy them. Celebrate them. Learn from them. We must build a culture of support where every Moor child grows up knowing that they are a part of something greater than themselves. Where they see examples of excellence and know that they are capable of achieving it too. Growing up, one of my first professors at Voorhees College, by the name of the late great John Jenkins, used to always say one thing to me and I appreciate it to this day. And he would say, you are capable and lovable. This is how we change the narrative. This is how we break the cycle of poverty, violence and despair that have plagued us far too long. By choosing to love one another fiercely, unapologetically and with purpose. So my call to action to you all is, family, this is our moment. Not tomorrow, not next year, now. I want you, one, commit to peace. Heal yourself. So you can heal our community. Please go to therapy. Two, pursue financial empowerment, build wealth and teach others to do the same. The young lady that was just on, amazing. Reach out to her. Three, uplift one another. Be the light in someone else's darkness. We have everything we need to create a legacy that our ancestors would be proud of. But it starts with us, right here, right now. We are not just individuals, we are a movement. We are a testament of resilience, a symbol of hope, a force of change. Let us walk together in unity, in strength and in love. Because when we unite, we are unstoppable. Together we rise, together we build and together we thrive. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
I could definitely go deeper into detail, but let's start with your questions.
So what I wanna ask you are some actionable steps. What steps can we take? We're going into holiday season. There's a lot of things going on. I know people will say shop black, but what does that mean? What can we actually do? What should we be doing and how should we be uniting amongst this? Whatever we're getting ready to go into.
So first, I hate to say it like this, a lot of us don't need to be shopping. Not at this time. We need to look towards the future. I know it's, yes, we need to support one another, but here's, here's the kicker. When is the last time a lot of us actually did our DTI? Our debt to income. A lot of people cannot afford to be out here shopping right now because with the way things are looking moving forward after January, we are going to miss out because we're being blinded by shopping. We really need to heal ourselves. So shopping, we can't do that right now. We cannot. If we go out and shop, you're wasting precious monies for things that are coming down the pipeline. Next question, ma'am?
I could see that. That makes a lot of sense. So what else should we be doing?
Right now, we need to be looking at our children. In the county that I'm in right now, right now, we have over twenty-one hundred students that are without. And we do not have the means or we're, we're not helping them in the manner that we should be. I just became the advisor over the Kiawanas Club, the Key Club, to help students get what they need. If we walk around our houses right now and look at some of the stuff that just sits in the same place each and every day and do not use it, those are the things that we need to be doing. We need to be donating. If you wanna do anything, help someone who is not eating. Talk to your, your, your children, if you have them. Talk to your children. Talk to your neighbors. Hey, is my, is my neighbor eating? I haven't seen my neighbor in the past week. When's the last time you went and knocked on their door? When is the last time we actually went outside of ourselves and say, do we need to help the person next to us? That's what we need to be focusing on. Because even for me, every year I do the sock and shoe drive. Every year I do my best to double it. Every year doubling, every year doubling. Now, it's, it's an amazing fight. I think we're over thirty thousand pairs of socks. Um, the shoes kind of dwindled a little in there, but the socks are more important for giving to those in need. But what we really need to focus on is looking at our immediate community. If you go next, if you walk outside every day and every day you see your grass is cut. For some reason, your neighbor's grass is not cut. Why not? You should go over there. Hey, excuse me, is everything alright? Because this is our community. Because if my house is clean. I, I want your house to be clean, at least the look of it. Because if I look good on the inside, I definitely want to, I would look great on the outside. So that's what we need to focus on, helping our children. Because of course they say, oh, you're older. Yeah, but as you older, you grow. As you grow up and you're looking down upon things, now you can slowly go down and reach into your roots and say, hey. This is what you need for nourishment. This is the type of watering you need. Now you're going to elevate higher within yourself. That's what is needed. Next question, ma'am.
Does anyone have any questions or any comments? I think this will be a good time for us to enter into a discussion if you all want to come off of mute. Um, and we can actually discuss what we can do. And I said at the beginning, this was the first time that I was doing this and this was just something that was on my heart to do. And it's really, um, you all are that's going to determine if this is something that we do again. And what it looks like in the future. Everyone on here has volunteered their time. This is a free event. No one, um, got paid for this. This is just something that everyone wanted to do. To help. And this is something I pulled together in a week, so they didn't have much time here. Um, so I think this is a good time for us to actually have a conversation and dialogue. About the, our next steps, what can we do in the community? Um, I know Mr. Smooth, he does a number of things. He's driven. From, you know, from Alabama to Tennessee to drop off a washer and dryer. To a single mother. Um, I have experienced, you know, he does a, a sock drive for homeless. Um, at least once, maybe twice a year. Um, so there are different things that we can do to uplift our community. Um, and to come together. And like you said, you know, and like I was saying. Twenty twenty-five is the year that we unite and we work together. This is not the time for us to continue to compete. So it'd be great if people come off of, um, this would be a great time if you turn on your cameras. And we really just insert into a discussion with the time that we have left.
Let me ask you something, um, where you are, Ms. Ms. Charisma. What type of events do they have where you are to help people around you?
So in Kenya, we have, um, what's called the slums, which is, um. I guess kind of like what we would consider the ghetto or the hood, but probably, um, worse. And we do a lot of events to give back to the children there. So for these places, they literally have houses with tin roofs. Um, that's made out of material. We, I, I, I don't even know what it is. Um, last year during the floods. These houses or these shacks actually, actually washed away and people lost their lives in floods. So that when I say they live in much worse conditions. And so I know a few people that have, um, nonprofit organizations. Um, I know they said actually Fifty Cent comes here and he gives back to this community. It's called Kefira. I think it's one of the largest slums in Africa, actually. And I know someone else, she does like a double dutch theme for the community. Um, the other day, some, uh, moms, one of the homeschool moms group. Went out there, took pizza and different things to the children. So it's a different, when you live abroad, the poor is a different level of poor than we see in America. Um, the poor can be really, really poor here. So, you know. Um, but they continue to educate them. And one thing that I like about the African community and the African culture. Is that, um, they definitely believe in education. When I came to Africa, I found Africans to be one of the most educated. Um, ethnicities of people I've ever encountered. Like I thought we were educated. But these people have degrees on degrees on degrees. And, you know, they send their children to boarding schools and they send them to all these places because they really believe in education. And that's their, their tool and their way out.
That is, that is awesome. I wish they had that here a little bit more. Um, being an educator here in Atlanta. It's scary. It's very, very scary because you see the students. And you see the ones that don't want to learn, that you see the ones that do want to learn and trying to. Separate the two to make the ones who actually want to be there excel is, is, is very hard. And day in and day out, I fight to figure out better ways for each student to say, hey, I want to be here. Actually wanted to do the work. Um, I just asked, was asked to be a part of another club, but I had to turn it down because. Once you get into education, you, you really have to be strong because they're going to put a lot of stuff on you. Not only on you, then you have to figure out the other stuff that you're doing and then they're going to want, man, it's, it's too much. So I just want to figure out how can we get our students to be like these children in Africa that actually want. To get degrees and go other places. But these kids now, it's, it's lack of motivation.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
So I, I guess I, uh, I've, you know, been hearing that. And I know that, um. I know at least for my generation, I'm a millennial and they said, you know, I guess the millennial generation is like one of the, I guess. One of the ones that has like the highest number of like, um, like, you know, like university and college degrees. And I guess with you, are you saying that I guess there seems to be like a regression now where I guess the coming, I guess, I guess what? Generation Alpha now, I guess, is like they're kind of like regressing now, seems like.
Well, uh, the students that I have ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth grade. I keep having to remind myself that these are the same students that missed out on. Third, fourth, fifth and sixth grade. Um, you will, you know how we look at this. We, uh, we, we look at people and say. You look at them and you already assume, oh, well, this person knows something or this child is, and, and is smart based off looks. We can't do that no more. One of my students in my class, you would look at him and say, that's a doctor right there. And for some reason, he cannot spell. Because he missed out on that in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So we're, we're missing out on. Getting these kids to where they need to be. But I, I know what it is. I really don't want to blame it on that, but I know what it is. Even coming to school, you'll have students walk around all day. And all they have in their hand is their phone. Every day, one girl, she comes to school with two cell phones, an iPad and her Chromebook. And every day, I have to remind her, based off our handbook, it says, no midriff shirts. I always have to tell her, yep, fix yourself, fix yourself. And I, and I actually broke down to them one day and said. It is sad that I have to continue to tell you to do the same thing every day. And I made them look it up to say, what does that mean? What do you, what, what do you call a person that you have to tell to do the same thing over and over and over and over? But I don't have to remind you to make a TikTok. I don't have to remind you to get your edges to look like kitchen curtains over the window. I don't have to remind you to be in some boy's face, but I have to remind you to do your work. What is more important? Now, I must say, I have. Seven Jamaican students and I have seven African students. I do not have to tell them to do anything twice. And I, I'm, I'll be honest, there's a young lady and, uh, we, we know her, her religion is different based off how she, how she dresses. Of course, she comes to school with a hijab. Every day she is the cleanest. Her brother is the sharpest. The other young brother from Jamaica comes in, Mr. Smooth, why, why brethren? I got all the work done and, you know, he just talks to me, we're talking patois to one another. And he's just like, yes, I got it done. And it's like, wow. How do we get the other kids to do that? Because guess what? They don't have cell phones. They don't have the iPads. All they have is the Chromebook. But every, all the other Americanized children. If it doesn't have anything to do with a phone, they don't want to hear about it. And we were taking a test, uh, a couple of weeks back. And so I made all the students put their phones in the middle. These kids, I hate to say it, they were walking around like crackheads, like, Mr. Smooth, is the test almost over? I, I need my phone. And all you heard, you're sitting on the deck. And everybody turned around and looked. I was like, no, don't get your phone. So if we can find a way to get their mind off of their phone and back in their books. We will be doing, we would be doing a great job. So that's what, that's what the problem is.
I think it's sad we have a board. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I've got a few things to say. Um, with that, what you were saying about the kids and the, um, the different cultures. Lot, lot of it is, I'll go to, starts at home. Uh, the parents is not doing what they need to supposed to be doing. They're trying to be their friend instead of being a parent. That's the main thing. So. While the other kids are studying and all that, our kids is playing video games. They got all this money, they shopping and, and the parents is not focusing on education. And then. They want the teacher to miraculously do all the work. When we was growing up, you did stuff at home with the kid too. That's what, that's what made the kid excel. You, you worked in school, you worked, you worked at home. And you, it was a combination, not just putting all the work on a teacher. It's not going to work like that all the time.
Can I ask you something, brother? My question to you is, when we were growing up, the stuff that we had didn't cost as much, right? Our shoes didn't cost that much. Basketball programs, football programs, even being a part of science programs, it didn't cost that much. But now, how, how is it? I have a student come to class every day, toe up from the floor up. And I have to ask her, what is going on? Believe it or not, she is raising her brother and sister. Why? She is raising her brother and sister because her family has to work. Now, does that, does that help us? No, that doesn't help us. But it hurts her because that doesn't give her the time to study. But.
Right, but you gotta realize, you gotta realize though, bro, this is not, she's not the first kid that was doing this. They was doing this back in the day too. Like, people had to raise their younger, younger kids, their, their younger siblings back in the day. This didn't just start. It's just that things is more expensive now. And people are still living, a lot of times people are living. Above their means, like, you trying to, you trying to impress everybody else and you can't afford it. That's a lot what's going on too. Like, you trying to live in a three hundred minute, three hundred dollars a dollar house and that's not just salary. Or you trying to live in an area where you, you just barely making it, living check to check. You should be somewhere else. Being able to have a money, having some, some money that sort of happened for, you know, a rainy day. But no, you want to have, want to live where everybody else at and you just have enough money just to get by. That's a lot of the problem too. And with the giving away part, when you revert to back to what you were saying at the beginning. We have to, yeah, we definitely have to because I know I got a lot of stuff that I haven't touched in years. I already talked to a few people that I'm gonna give away, I've been giving away, but. You have to do that. I, I agree with that. And I agree with, I don't agree with the, not all the way with the, um. Competing with other people. I, 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 I believe in friendly competitive competition, not envying you. But we competing like, you know, on a friendship, like, you know. Competing to do better, not like, oh, nah, I want you to make it, like, competing on like, aye, boom, a word. You did this, you made this percentage of, and you did good on this part, I'm gonna try to do a little bit better than you. And then we'll discuss like, oh, how, how did you get to that level and how do you get me to that level? Not on, on like, oh, nah, he made hundreds of some thousand and I only made sixty thousand. I don't like them, not on that, but like on some competitive thing and try to help each other get to, I'll try to get to the level you on or. You get to the level I want. Or I was even taking it even more personal. And when I was working, doing what I had to do, you kept telling me like, yo, bro, you gotta level up, you gotta move up. You gotta, you know, gotta start making more money. So what I did was. Got a promotion and I see the difference. You could do different things, but you have to apply yourself. A lot of people don't want to apply themselves and they want help, but they don't want to help themselves first. That's, that's one of the main things, bro. We see this a lot. Oh, I need help, I need help. But you look at the person and you're like, yo, you're not even doing nothing. Should be helped.
You just, you just gave the key point of everything that I was saying. You have to start within.
Right.
So this new setup, please go listen to the young lady that was before me. And then the other young lady before me and the other young lady before me. And actually go check out Charisma page. Because there is so many resources to get us where we need to be without worrying who's going to step up next to the podium. Because soon as it steps up, the next person steps up to the podium, it is going to hurt a lot of people. In areas that they don't even understand yet, or haven't even touched the, or scratched the surface. Because Medicare is needed. But if you get rid of Medicare, a lot of people, guess what? Grandma, granddad. Great grandma, great granddad, they gotta go back to work now. Now, how is it that someone who is over the age of seventy-two. Trying to compete with somebody that over the age of fifty for a job? That's insane. That's insanity for our nation. So how can we build our community up? One way we can build our community up, I like this. I'm currently in my backyard building a, um, a garage. But between all of us. At the top of my garage is going to be a greenhouse. Why do I want a greenhouse? With a greenhouse, I could provide fruits and vegetables and different things to the immediate areas around me. I could provide food for people in need. Because again, that is one of the biggest things that we have a problem with. Children still going to sleep each and every day without eating. How is that? Because the price of food is.
Price of food is high, definitely. You get three things, that's a hundred dollars. Like, what?
And, and it is. It is almost a hundred dollars just to get three things. So that is one way we need. Say again.
Sorry. Rain has a question for you. But finish your statement first.
Um, my statement was, we just really need to take the time to build up things that we know we need. We need food. Why not create a, a garden in our backyard to, you know, hey, you do potatoes. I do tomatoes, somebody else does something and then we get this web. The true form of a network so we can sustain. But go ahead with the question.
Hi, I'm sorry, I can't put my, my camera on. I, I guess I didn't give it permission or something like that on my, on my phone. But, um, I do want to applaud you, um, for, you know, what. No, I still, it, it's not you guys, it's me. Somebody tried to do that, but it's me. Um, I, 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 um, I agree that I, I came out of, of private industry. Went into teaching, that was not on my list to do either. I ended up doing it for twenty-five years. I absolutely loved it. And that, that inner work that we do on ourselves. I think it required, we're required to, to have that. Because that's what allowed me to absolutely love my students. I love them. I cared about them. And I, there were some shocking things. I was teaching at a community college and. There were times in my head that I thought, did you miss this grade? But I didn't say it. I didn't say it. And I would also follow that thought up with, my job is to teach them. It is not to criticize them, judge them, embarrass. It is not to criticize them, judge them, embarrass them in front of the other students. So the idea of teaching. Whether it's inside the classroom or outside the classroom. I believe that we need to look at our children as an investment. A really important investment. We're investing in them for our futures. So I, I, I hate the fact, and I do believe when that brother said that this is a calling. It was a calling that I didn't know I had. I didn't know I had that, you know? I, I didn't want to deal with people. I worked in analytics and. I got to work with, you know, analytical instrumentation. Cool. They don't talk back. They don't talk back, even though I named all of them. That was my connection. But you get these people who come in to teach and they're teaching because they didn't pass the law, the law exam. They're teaching because they're getting divorced and they need some extra money. I've had, I've worked with teachers who didn't even like young people. Didn't even like them.
They will make you not like them. I swear. But go ahead, go ahead.
I know, but, but you know what? I, I used to pass, uh, by a community college that I could walk to. And I would always look over at that college and say, man, why am I getting on this freeway? Driving for forty five minutes. And my husband and my daughter would always say, my daughter would say, mom, they need you. And that was a motivating fact for me to keep on down there to the, to the, uh, community college that was, you know. In the neighborhood, you know, and, and the students were, you know, all, uh, uh, students of color. And the stories that they told, we have to be very careful about criticizing our young people. I was told some stories about how they're living and stuff like that, that I just, I couldn't believe.
And.
I couldn't believe, you know, one more thing, one more thing. I, I just want to give a picture of, of what we're talking about here. Because this is a legacy that we're looking at, a legacy of slavery. A legacy of don't teach them to read, don't teach them to write, don't teach them to do these things. And this stuff is institutionalized. Institutionalized. So it's a fight. I, I, let me tell you, when I retired. There were two hundred students at my retirement. There were two administrators. You know why? They didn't like me. And I didn't care if they liked me or not. I fought for my students and those, some of them came from overseas. And I was shocked when they came in. I was surprised. And one of them said, I could not miss your retirement party. So that's, that's the benefit that we receive. That we know that we've done something. For some young people that are going to improve the quality of their life and hopefully the quality of their children. And we can make that generational. Not just financial generational wealth, but other types of generational wealth as well.
Yes, yes. I definitely, um, love your story. Um, I want to go back to the investment part. And I have to remind us. When is the last time you looked at a fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen year old parent? I was talking to one of my students and she said her parent was thirty. And she's sixteen. I was talking to another student and said, her mother, I think was twenty seven. And the investment portion. Yes, invest into your, your, your children. I just totally agree. But a lot of these parents are investing backwards. You see what I invest into? This is what I invested into, right here. You see her over there and then my son over there. Those are my greatest investments, but this is also their investment because it's here. A lot of these kids coming to school, they have on a thousand dollar pair of shoes. Nine hundred pants. And they could tell you this word for word. Shirt costs three hundred. Mr. Smooth, do you have a pencil? Mr. Smooth, first thing I do, email. Hey, I have your, your child here. And, um, I notice they, they are amazing. They're fresh to death. But for some reason they're lacking utensils to even be at, at an institution. Then, ah, Mr. Smooth. Do you have a charger for your, for your Chrome back, Chromebook? Let's, uh, let's, okay, okay. Um, we need to talk to the parent more so. All right. The parents need to be in on what is more important. Like you said, investing into the student, but instead of investing into, um, just basketball, football, things of that nature, the parent needs to. Definitely focus on what is being put into the, um, the student. I love my student. I truly do. But it's very, very hard to talk to the parent. But when the parent sees that you are to, here to help. Then they actually, okay, I'm gonna get my child on this. So definitely, you're ninety nine as, um, adults. I think, uh, Mr. Cherry just spoke about that. It started with him. But not only did it start with him, it started with somebody else pushing him. Pushing him to actually want to be better in all aspects of life. So you could do more. Um, that's where we need to start with, uh, uh, adults. The same way you, Ms. Charisma. You, you let me know, hey, you're doing this, but maybe you should look at it this way. I, I appreciate that. Because now it takes me a little bit of moment. I'll go dark on everybody to understand who I am and say, you know what? Maybe I am doing something wrong. You know, and then of course, I, I'm not ashamed to admit, I'll call all my therapists. I got four of them. Hey, uh. Somebody said, da, 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 da. How do you think I, what do you, how do you see me? Because I need to know. Because of course, just standing in the mirror, I see a guy with, with dark glasses and a beard. You know, cooler than a fan, but how can I better me? So every time somebody tells me something, of course, I reach out to them. How many in here actually go to therapy? Anybody?
I do.
Not right now.
I do.
Who was that? Okay. I heard somebody in the background. Take the time to do that.
I do.
Hey. What's? Everybody, what is something that you have learned about yourself that you didn't know through therapy? For me. I learned that I am. Like a hot spear when it's something I want. I am overly driven. But being overly driven, I was told that it blinds me. To everything around me, when I possibly need to slow down to see what is around me. So what is something that you learned about yourself? That helped you or made you a better person that could unite you with someone else for the benefit?
I'm gonna speak. Oh, I'm sorry.
For me, I learned that I'm a perfectionist. I actually did therapy with my daughter who informed me that I was a perfectionist. Not realizing in my thirty something years that that's what I was. And by stepping back and realizing that. I could reevaluate the things that I was doing in the way that I was doing them. Because my goal was never to make anyone else feel less than. It was always to raise people up to the higher level. But I think we have to realize. Especially for people that are perfectionists, that everyone's level is not the same. We all have different places. We all have different gifts. And we need to focus in on what our gifts are. You don't have to be perfect. You just need to be the best that you can be.
Okay. Uh, I think the next person that said they wanted to talk with is Ms. Vincent. Go ahead.
I'm not able to turn my camera on. I'm sorry. Um. Something that I learned, I've been in therapy four years and counting. And something that I learned about myself. I think this may have been maybe the first year, year and a half in therapy, that I am a person of intentionality. I'm very intentional. Um, my therapist pointed this out to me. Based on the things that I had shared with her, with the interactions that I have with my inner circle. And with just coworkers or just people I meet. And for me. It made me focus more on intentionality. Like, wow, you really are a person of intentional, intentionality. And, um. From that space, I have been more intentional with those close to me, teaching them intentionality. And showing them what it means to be intentional, you know? Um, an example for that could be, um. I'm very intentional about my family. So I'm very intentional about quality time when I spend with certain family members. Because I know maybe they're not going to be here as long. Or I'm very intentional about the children of my friends who have kids. Um, I don't have kids. So when I call friends, I may be. More focused on their children when I reach out to them, because that's the intentionality. And so in doing that, it reveals to my friends to be intentional to contact me, to update me on their children. So intentionality has, has really been good for me. And it's something that. I plan to expand and just to continue to focus on. Cause it, it has helped me, um. Heal and grow, continue to grow. So.
Okay. Anybody else? I, I heard about five people want to talk at once.
I, I've learned, I've learned, um, from therapy. Um. That. I, I just, I've, I've been in it now, I guess, uh. Six, maybe six months, something like that. So, you know, I did a lot of listening and they were giving me, you know, different exercise to do. What it comes down to is. If I fill out an application and it says, what are your hobbies? My what? I don't do hobbies. I don't crochet. I don't knit. I don't, I don't do none. I, that I've always been, maybe the word is driven or intentional or whatever. But the drive and the intention was never. Focus, it was never focused on me. It's always outside of me. So when I'm asked questions about relaxation and fun and those types of things. I stutter because somehow or another, I think that I'm not valuing. My own life as much as I'm valuing the lives outside of me. You know, I get caught up in, you know, like since the election, I stopped, um. I stopped looking at the news. I don't look at the news, period. I still do it because I can't handle it. Because I get pissed off and I start to explode and it's just not good for me. So I really am starting to. Look a, a little bit more at myself, what I need to do. Um, I mean, the other day I went and got a massage. Woo hoo. I mean, for some, I have friends to get a massage every month. Every month, once a month, they get their nails done, their feet done, you know, the massage and all that kind of stuff. And I'm like, I don't have time. I retired. My friends tell me that's a lie. I did retire from the other job, but then I took on these other things. So, so I don't know if it's, I just don't want to focus on myself or my life. Uh, maybe I'm uncomfortable with it. I don't know. I guess there's more to be revealed. You know, more to be revealed. Um, and even with the consulting work that I'm doing, that feels like a job. Um. I, I'm working with some people that are Trumpers. Ooh. One of them I went off on. Been working with her for a lot of years, but I always held my tongue. Tried to be professional, be professional, be professional. And then one morning she told me something. It was ugly. It was ugly. She didn't even get a chance to say anything. I was on her like white on rice.
My question becomes, with all of us going through different therapies. How has it brought you closer? To your community or others, uh, other more people or Moorish people? Have it brought you closer to say, hey? I want to help you because I, I was listening to a quote last night by Mike Tyson. He says. Sometimes you just gotta stop helping people who don't want to help themselves. And he said it just like that. How do we begin to find the ones who want the help? How do we? When's the last, anybody, how many here are parents that still alive?
Nine.
Okay. When's the last time? When's the last time you seen your mother? The last time I seen my mother was last week and I took her a load of wood. For, uh, for her fireplace, because I know she loves a fire.
Yeah, I see her every week. I literally saw her Thursday. So literally after work, um, I work, uh, I do hybrid. So. The two days I go into work, um, I'll see her either both of those days or at least one of those days. So at least she sees me at least once a week, her and her husband. So.
Do you? Purposely take her something to say, hey, I love you? Or you do something?
Sometimes.
Okay.
Yeah, sometimes she loves flowers. So, you know, I'll get her some flowers here and there. They just moved. So I've been literally. Uh, for the past couple of months, um, kind of, you know, going over there helping, um, you know, helping them unpack. She's, she's not well. She doesn't move around as much. So I've literally like for the past weekends, I think from August to like maybe October. Um, every weekend I was going over there, you know, unpacking boxes, um, helping them put things up, helping them clean, you know, their new house. Um, so yeah, so usually, you know, I, you know, I, I, I do my work.
Okay. Anybody else?
Both of my parents are in different states. Um, however. That intentionality I talked about, I'm intentional by how I contact them. I like to do video calls so I can see their face. So I can read what's going on in the house, know what's going on. And when I do make the time to go visit them. It's always intentional. It's quality time, you know, we may go out to eat. Um. I focus on what their interests are, whatever it is they want to do. And sometimes I do bring random, you know, gifts or little tangible things for them.
Okay. Hey, what I, of course, time is almost coming to an end. What I want everybody to do, take out a pen, paper, something really quick. Um, I want to give you all three things to do. Write down the name of every Moorish or as you would say, black owned business within a five mile radius. After you write all that down. Take an opportunity to go visit them, talk to them. Also. Write down your DTI. Write down your DTI. You need to know what's going out versus what's coming in. Once you write down what's going out versus what's coming in, if you are living over your means. Something has to stop. And lastly. I want you to figure out where is your nearest farmer's market? And is a black owned? Cause ninety percent of them are black owned, but they won't tell you that. They won't tell you that. Once you figure out all these things, you will understand what you need to do. Adults. If you have clothes and you see someone next to you and they need some clothes. Excuse me, what size do you wear? All right, cool. Go into your closet. Go to somebody else's closet. Go anywhere that you need to. Hey, excuse me. I'm, my friend of mine, he has helping hand. Um, would you be willing to donate? Because I don't donate to hold stuff anymore. I donate to just, hey, I know somebody that needs it. I have three families right now that need. One needs a washing machine. One needs, oh yeah, she needs a dryer. I'm sorry. She needs a dryer. One family needs beds for her children because they're sleeping on the floor. Um. One of her children, you know, they need clothes. Um, a friend of mine, family house just burnt down after homecoming. So it's just a lot of stuff that is needed. I need you all to start looking around. I don't care where you are. Find your nearest place where you can donate or a person you can donate to. I, I'm not the biggest fan of goodwill. And I'm not the biggest fan of Salvation Army. Find somebody, say, hey. Are you doing well? Talk to them first. Gauge on how they are doing. Excuse me, are you doing well? Are you doing good? If they say no, be mindful, people are going to start pouring out. And all you have to do is listen. These two things on the side of your head, you have to use them. When it comes to helping someone, because you get to listen to what they truly need. Some people are gonna say, oh, they just need money. When it comes to helping someone, because you get to listen to what they truly need, some people are gonna say, oh, they just need money. Sorry, I I I can't give you no money right now. What, can I feed you? Some people, uh uh, they need to get a fix of some sort. I don't pay for nobody else's habits. I barely pay for mine, and I love cars. The point is, our time is to unify one another in helping us. If you see somebody, it's also in how you say it, cuz I have a problem with saying certain things to certain people, because I'm like a two way sword. If it cuts me, it's gonna cut you too. But let them know, hey, I appreciate you, I enjoy what you're doing, but I need you to look at life this way. I need you to look at life that way, I, cuz I want you to better yourself. And if they choose not to better themselves, you have to cut them off where it is. Say, hey, I I I've given my time, I give it my love, because I hate to say it, you have to cut off dead roots. Once you cut off those dead roots, you're going to begin to connect into people who truly wanna be there for the right reason, like my best friend. I used to push him, push him, push him, push him, push him. I thought I was falling on deaf ears until one day, yo, bro, I got a new job, making da 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 da, I'm doing this. And the last thing he said, it touched my soul, is that, thank you, man, thank you. You and my father kept telling me to do that, 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 now I did it. I appreciate you. That's all we need to do. That is one of our best ways to build a stronger community. First, we have to give to ourselves. Once we give to us ourselves, we will give to others. Once we give to others, man, it it'd be a great, a great thing. Be slow and be careful where you um connect with churches, man. Please, you can't, you can't give to every church, so be mindful to actually what church you give to. Don't give to the church, give to the members. Give to the members, that's one thing I learned the hard way. I was down at one of the big churches here in Atlanta. Uh, they got a gentleman by the name of uh Dr. Jamal Bryant. Be careful when you're giving to certain entities or certain temples. Give directly to the person, that benefits way quicker, way quicker, so. Yeah, any more questions, anything? Uh, als- also, if you know somebody that is in the state of Georgia, or is there anybody that uh is in need for a student um, or for a family that you know they don't have a lot of money for their child to go back to school, tell them to reach out to Helping Hands. I will give my email real quick, it is G I V at H E L P I N G H A N D S S dot C O. Shoot them, uh have them shoot me an email, and I definitely will um, send them ten different websites to go to, to build uh for scholarships. This is for all students worldwide. Then, if you're located directly in Georgia, there is a website where all students, now they have their application fees waived. Waived, waived. They have their application fees waived um for this time uh through Georgia. So I definitely want everybody to get money for, um, yes, I believe she will post the email. But um, I I truly enjoy myself, Ms. Charisma, I know you're probably late, late over there. And I I I, it was a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having me. Um, I hope you all enjoyed um my speech or me speaking. And this is, this is what I love to do. Um, also, reach out to your HBCUs, see what they need. Don't just hear it over the phone, go there, see what they need, see what they need. And anytime you don't want me to talk again, you know, I can, I can go for hours. I can definitely talk for hours, so. Yes, anything else, Ms. Freeman?
Now, we are going to get ready to close out. Um, I wanna thank everyone for um being here today and um doing this first town hall meeting with us. Um, if you did not get a chance to see everything, we talked about multiple things today. We talked about your mental and your physical health during this time um, and dealing with the stressors of um things that we haven't dealt with before. Racism, sexism, and all the isms to exponential levels. We also talked about um ways for people that want to move abroad. We talked about steps that you can do that. Ms. Faye Tilery talked about that with us and gave us actionable steps that we could take. Um, we spoke with Ms. Ashley, and she talked to us about being financially sound and preparing for what's to come, whether you are a um nine to five employee or a business or a business owner. And lastly, we spoke with Mr. Smoove, who told us different ways that we can come together, unite our community, educate our young people, and some actionable steps that we can take. If you have not registered for this, if you just got the Zoom link, please click and register, because I will be sending the replay for you all to watch um, as well as the contact information for all the speakers. Um, if you want to, um, if you need more information from them, you wanna know about them, you wanna join their podcast, you wanna donate, you wanna book an appointment, you need, you wanna join a free meeting or a free call. So I will be emailing that out, so just um sign up there, you'll receive a welcome email. You don't need the welcome email, but it's just to get you on that email list so that I can send this information out to you. Um, I'm also going to send a survey, because I wanna know what you all thought about this, if this is something you'd like, if this is something you wanna do again. Um, for those that don't know, I literally put this together in a week. This idea came to me last Saturday. It was on my heart. It was something that I felt like I needed to do for my community. I live in Kenya now, I'm not in Atlanta. If Mr. Smoove could tell you, if I was in Atlanta, I will be doing something on the ground. I've taken my kids to march during Black Lives Matter, you know, I'm I'm donating, I'm uh I donate, I volunteer, I do all of these different things. But since I'm not on the ground, I have to find another way to give back. Um, I also thank Mr. Smoove for coming on, because I think a lot of times we've been fed the narrative in the media that black men don't give a damn. And what we have seen in in the polls, even though we lost this, you know, even though the race may not have gone the way we wanted to, one thing that we saw for sure was that black men do care. Well, you know, it has been since times of slavery that they put loud, ignorant black men on display to dance around for the master. And what we see is that our strong black men are here, and they're behind, they're standing behind us, and they're rooting us on and they're doing all of these things a hundred percent, but they're not going to put them in front of us. The media's not gonna showcase those black men, because if they do, then we know who to follow. We know how to connect, we know how to unite, then they can lead us. So what they do is they put the ones, the the ones that talk down on us, that talk, that treat us as if we're we're trash, that don't elevate us. But in actuality, our black men are here, they're present, they're empowering us, they're elevating us, and they are doing their part. And I think, you know, it's far past time that we come together as a community and we understand what is going on. You know, one thing that I I I see here, and I mentioned earlier, I live in Kenya, and one thing that I will see, I went apartment shopping. There are apartments by Indians, there are apartments by Chinese. There are apartments by the Zulu Nation and another tribe. You wanna know who doesn't have apartments? Black Americans, we have nothing. We have a car, we have a house, we have purses. What we don't have is a unity, connection, and putting our money together. Yes, you you help those who help themselves, but guess what? Some of it, some people don't know how to help themselves. That doesn't mean they don't want to help themselves, they don't know how. So this right here is just the introduction of how do we help ourselves, how do we empower each other? How do we ed- educate? How do we elevate? So, you know, if this is something you all want in the future, these are speakers that came out here, gave their time, and decided to speak with you. There's no money, you're not paying any money, they're not getting paid any money. I've been on here since nine AM Eastern, I've got paid nothing. But what I did was, I get paid in blessings. I get paid in seeing you all take these messages and going forward with it. So I hope that this has made a dent and a change in your life. Maybe it sparked interest, maybe you're like, okay, Charisma, I have something to speak on, I have something to say. You know, I know how I can help. You'll go next door to your neighbor and help your neighbor. You'll go and help someone else. You'll make that move to start saving money and putting money away instead of spending all of our dollars for Christmas like we normally do, because our dollars go really, really far, if you don't realize that. You know, and I'm gonna get off my soapbox in a second, but you know, I was listening to something and it said, you remember when Tommy Hilfiger, when we all thought, who said he didn't like black people and his clothes weren't for black people? When in actuality, he, they say, he said that it was just that he never made the clothes for urban, the urban community. So and he was saying he had no idea that's who would um rock his clothes, basically. Y'all remember when you all stopped buying Tommy Hilfiger? And I know in Atlanta, Tommy Hilfiger went to Baden Village, and if you don't know, like Baden City. And if you know Baden City, Baden City was where all the cheap knockoff clothes went. We completely destroyed Tommy Hilfiger, and that's how powerful the dollar is. So, you know, these are lessons that we need to take and we need to instill in our community and our children and everyone else. So um, on that note, like I said, I put the link in to register, so I can send you everyone's information. You can get that, get that information from Mr. Smoove, he, where he said he has scholarships. Because even if your child isn't going to college, you may know a child that's going to college. Join the new podcast where Ashley is dropping tips and teaching us our financial wheelhouse. And no, I needed to have four accounts. I have two of the accounts you mentioned, maybe three. But I realized that we needed to have four accounts. This is what we needed to be doing. We talked to Faye. Faye did her black sit or moved abroad, and she said she she hustled for five months and got thirty thousand dollars. She was, she's an attorney, she was driving Uber. She was, she's doing all kinds of stuff to hustle and get her money up and grind. And she came out here, she did her Airbnbs, and when no sale, she did her coffee exporting. When she did, she did her um construction company, like she said, she never touched base on a construction site. And when that didn't work, she sold that. And for myself, I am a single mother, two children, one in college, one with a disability. A a very rare disability, and people will ta- can tell me all day, every day, all day, that I shouldn't be doing what I'm doing. I shouldn't be able to survive without making, without working a nine to five, but I do. I invest in real estate and I I make my money, that my child has special means and a disability. We shouldn't be traveling the world, we should be at, you know, in the US, in the school, with whatever it is that they give us. But my child has been to over ten countries, and he just turned thirteen. You know, people will tell me that my daughter shouldn't have traveled as much as she did. She went, she went to um, oh, where did she go? To Italy and all of that before I even went there. So, you know, there are things that we're doing collectively, and we're not talking about them. So reach out to somebody, reach out to your neighbor, talk to someone, and figure out what is it that you can learn from them and what what can you give to them as well. So on that, um, I'm done. So thank you all for coming. Make sure you register, please fill out a survey, let me know if you want this again. And I appreciate each and every one of you for giving us your time today and showing up and um just being part of our community at this point. Anything?
Have a great night.
Yeah, yeah, it's nighttime for me. Y'all have a great day. You are so welcome. I'll stay on for a second if you all need me for anything.
Hey, so I'm looking for an apartment in Africa. Hook, hook me up, cuz uh the one in Dubai is doing amazing. However, because I'm ready, because um, which I don't mind that. Whatever, if you have more control in the school, please come teach your child, because according to different things, we have our own curriculum.
Um, and you'll get that email that will come tomorrow, tomorrow I believe, with all of the information. So now we are going to go to our next person. Just a second. Okay, and then hopefully I have shared my screen. I'm not sure if Brittany is on to tell me or not.
Yes, you are, you're good.